September seventeenth, Co-op School Board meeting to order at six oh four. We're smidged delayed because of a technical issue, but we are now up and running. So we've called to order. Are there any agenda adjustments?
I have one.
Yes.
Can I give the board updates on the C E A C?
Sure, we can add that to.
Discussions.
After facilities.
Yeah.
Is that okay? So there'll be a fifth item there. What is that saying for again? C E A C?
Yeah, it's the capital. It's C E.
Expenditure.
Expenditure Advisory Committee. I had to think about that. I was practicing it on the drive in, but it didn't help.
Okay. So you'll give us an update from that.
I will. I will try.
Thank you. That's perfect. Okay. Are there any other agenda adjustments?
I have none.
Um, is it, were we thinking that we wanted to move the bell-to-bell cellphone discussion to after public input because you have to leave at seven for? Hollis has a, Hollis, the school board, has a presentation tonight that could only be scheduled that tonight because of the engineer's availability. So Gina will be leaving at seven-ish, a little bit before seven, so you can get to that. So could we move that after public input just so that you can be present for it? Or do you not want to do that?
Um, I.
So after public input?
Um, I would love to see that. We don't have a ton of public here, so let's try to plow through this.
Oh.
Because I need to make sure that other people can leave.
Okay. Okay. All right.
If that, if she's leaving early, can we get the Facilities Committee update before you leave?
Sure. Did you see your email?
I saw it.
Okay. Okay.
That's why I wanted.
Well, if we're going to move through this quickly, then we need to move through this quickly. So, um, do we have any nominations, resignations, and correspondence?
We have none.
Okay. Um, during, after we open public input, if there's not a lot of public input, I will share the correspondence that we've received. I'm not going to read it, but I'll summarize the two correspondence that we have received related to the cellphone policy. And the board has seen those. I forwarded both of those to you. Okay. Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. Resignations? Nothing?
Nothing.
All right. So that's done. Um, I need a process observer. I know it's been Cindy's turn, and I didn't even ask her last, last time. So, um, is there someone else who could do it this time? Tom. Tom will be our process observer. Okay. So we have some minutes to approve. Let's move to that. Um, we have some minutes from the Hollis Brookline School Board's meeting on August twentieth. Kate and Beth were absent, but as we've learned, you can still vote or you can abstain. It's up to you. So we have the following amendments on page five, line twelve, delete "the handbook" at the end of the sentence as it is repetitive. Page seven, line three, delete "the" following "if." Page ten, line eleven, replace "the" with "them." And page fourteen, line eighteen, delete "a" following "are." Um, so I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
So moved by Kate and seconded by Beth. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Okay. All those in favor? Motion carries, seven zero. We also had some non-public minutes. Again, Beth and Kate weren't here, so, um, I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Rob. Are there any questions on those?
They're all sent out.
Yeah, I thought I saw them.
Mm-hmm. I remember.
Okay.
Okay.
I read what I got.
I think it was just a sentence or two. Yeah. All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay. So we are ahead of schedule for public input, but rather than wait, I think what we're going to do is open the floor for public input, but give a, give until, so the set time would be six forty is when public input would end. We're two minutes early, so we'll open the floor for public input now, but we will close the floor at six forty. If there is public input, we'll take it. If not, then people come in, we can, um, certainly have them come and speak during that time or at a time that's convenient during the meeting. But we will move on with the meeting. Sorry, I stumbled through that, but I got it. I think it's understood. Um, so are there any questions on that? No. Okay. Oh, I said, I'm doing it in favor. Okay. So I'm opening the floor for public input at six oh eight. Is there anyone present to do public input? So just for the record, um, this, members of the board have received two emails related to the cellphone ban. I don't know if I've shared them with the building leadership team. I know that I shared them with some members of the S A U leadership team and the policy committee. One we received was a person who had some concerns. Some of them are, some of the concerns related to policy language, um, related to what was in the policy, really, the, some of the statements about video, videography and those kinds of things, which I think we can dig into more when we talk about the policy because it wasn't really about the ban. It was about some of the language issues in the policy. Some concerns that this person brought up were, and this is a public, you know, I mean, people could see it if they want to, but, um, she was concerned about the fact that we have maybe made our policy or our procedures stricter than what the law might lay out. Um, and, and anybody on the board who's read it, you can correct me because I'm trying to summarize. I don't have it in front of me. Um, specific concerns were, um, related to personal laptops being something that we're not allowing and why we aren't allowing laptops. Um, and we can, somebody can talk about that during discussion. Also, some concerns about the way the consequences are laid out and the inconvenience for parents if a child, um, loses their phone during the day and, um, a parent needs to be able to pick that phone up and sort of concerns about the fact that the cellphone is, for many kids, their only opportunity to make a phone call, the after-school if they're at home because they don't have landline access. So there was some of that. Um, was there anything else that I, big, that you can remember from that? And that was the general sense. It wasn't anti-cellphone ban. It was more concerned with how we are enforcing the consequences. Um, and then we all.
Yeah, there was one on the right of it, and that is that they didn't feel that there was enough notification.
Right.
That the policy was coming out.
Right. Um, and that was the concerns. On the flip side, we also received an email from a staff member who happens to be a resident of the community as well. And that email kind of laid out what that person, who's a, who's a seasoned teacher in our building, um, is experiencing. And it was incredibly positive about the fact that students seemed to be more engaged, um, socially, that they're asking more questions, that they're talking to each other, that they are, um, that it has been a, a sea change, if you will, like a total change in, in the community building and in the academics of the, of the building, um, and super positive. Interesting, I thought that it really was kind of the change with the way kids have been about cellphones. She seemed to identify as part of a, kind of a post-COVID thing. Like kids had cellphones before COVID, but she really talked about the fact that since COVID, the kids have just been in their phones. And I wonder if that has something to do with the fact that we, you know, they all went online and became screenagers, if you will, and then kind of that kicked off sort of an addiction, addiction to the phone and, and now, um, and I don't, I don't use the word addiction, sorry, but a connection to a phone that they.
A dependency.
A dependency on.
Well, adults did the same.
Right.
That's how you stayed connected with everybody.
Right. And so, um, and then I, I think the general sense from her was that there doesn't seem to be a compliance issue, that the kids are complying.
The other big thing that I took away from it was that said that they're able to reintroduce elements of the curriculum.
Right.
Which requires greater focus and attention that they had been unable to, uh, teach in the last couple of years because of the distraction element and that having the student's attention and the real-time collaboration within the classroom enabled them to tackle curriculum elements, more difficult problems and, uh, items requiring a higher level of concentration that they used to teach but have had in recent past had to pull out of the curriculum for lack of success with it.
So that's just kind of a summary of the public, of the input that we've received, the feedback that the board has received. So, um, we'll move on with our agenda. And when we get to discussion, I'd love to hear from, you know, the principals as to what they've heard, but this was kind of like, I was just kind of using it as sort of public input time, like since we don't have public input.
A little bit of a diving board into the pool.
Yeah. Right. So I don't see any other parents here. I know we've, we've definitely, um, publicized it.
I think the other thing that, um, maybe to reiterate is that we are in first reading of that policy, right? So it is still open and.
Yep.
Uh, community members can continue to provide input as we go through the process of approval.
Yep. Absolutely.
And we can solicit it a little bit more.
I think this was solicited, though. I think we've, we've been announcing it in, in newsletters that.
At Open House.
And at Open House, which was just last week, that this was an opportunity to talk about that. So, um, so that's, and we'll hear more about this when we get to discussion, but I just wanted to kind of put out what we, what we've received in terms of feedback in summary. Um, okay. So moving on to the principals' reports, I would ask one of you to kind of quickly summarize the athletic board report. We've all read them, so.
Yeah. Uh, I'll start with the, the high school athletics. Uh, so fall sports have started off and they're going really well. Um, a lot of our teams are starting right where they left off last year with some undefeated teams. Our cross-country, both boys and girls are finishing, you know, first or second, third in their races. They're doing really well. Uh, we've got some teams that are, um, looking at, you know, working on some skills and rebuilding. Um, and, um, our Unified Soccer starts tomorrow with their first game of the season. So a lot of exciting stuff happening, uh, at the high school athletics for the fall.
We're going to tag-team the athletics reports moving forward. We'll do the middle school. Uh, middle school kicked off their fall season the first day of school, tryouts. Uh, volleyball team kicked things off on nine eleven with games at Mountain View and McCarthy Middle School. The rest of the teams began their regular seasons on nine fifteen, which, uh, not a single one of our teams lost that day. It was a tie for field hockey, but everybody else came out, uh, with a victory. And our cross-country teams competed last Saturday in their first event, and our boys took fourth overall and our girls took fifth overall out of, uh, twelve teams, I think. So very nice job to start, and participation numbers are down there for the last three years. Middle school has slightly dropped, but mostly attributed to the decline in volleyball participants, while the high school numbers have seen significant increase with football participation numbers jumping by seventeen total players.
Does football only have one team or they have a JV team?
They have a JV team as well.
Okay. That's, we haven't had a JV team in a while, so that's interesting.
Um, not this coming weekend, but the following weekend is homecoming, and so we'll kick things off on Friday with girls soccer at four, field hockey under the lights, and girls volleyball playing at six thirty. Boys soccer and football will wrap things up on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, with games starting at nine AM. And then we have our homecoming dance on Saturday evening as well. Um, and then we have a donation from the Booster Club, um, with a concessions trailer. Um, so all the information is there. Brian mentioned you guys were aware of this, so I will try to field any questions, but other than that information, I don't know a ton about.
Great.
So that is something we'll have to formally accept.
Yeah, we have to formally accept that donation because it's over the, um.
The limit.
Limit. Okay. Great. Terrific. Thank you. I, it's nice to see those participation numbers. I like to see those every year, and it looks like we have more kids at the high school and a few less at the middle school, but that's also probably due to some enrollment numbers too. So, great. Any other questions on the athletic report?
Do we plug in for these?
No questions? Okay. Moving on to the principal reports. We'll just keep moving. Uh, I have to find them. Patrick, you're starting. Are you doing your school board report or your building goals?
Uh, I can do my school board report and then, um, go over our goals if that's, uh, okay with you.
It's always a co, yeah, that's right. Sounds great, Patrick. Awesome.
Just looking through my report, uh, the school year is off to a really great start. Um, the vibes in the building have been really great, uh, with the start of the school, uh, start of the school year and our opening, uh, all-school assembly was high energy, lots of fun, team-building games. Um, it's just been a really great start to the school year. Uh, both grades are, started off, uh, being respectful, kind, supportive of each other. Um, and we have a number of new staff in the building who, um, come from a number of different places. Uh, an individual coming from Texas who, uh, feels like she's in paradise. Uh, no offense to anybody from Texas. But it's just been a really great start to the school year and things are, uh, really going well. Our D C trip is scheduled for April, uh, of twenty twenty-six. It's a Monday through Thursday this year. Um, we try to do the Tuesday through Friday, but sometimes just with hotels and costs, with us trying to keep that cost as low as possible, uh, the Monday through Thursday is the best option for us this year. Um, and our typical schedule with a few adjustments. Um, and we are doing a, um, dinner dance at the hotel now, just based off some feedback and some previous years. Uh, last year was the first year we did that with the dance at the hotel. There's a DJ, a buffet dinner. Uh, it was a really nice, uh, kind of change to the, uh, trip that also kind of made it a little bit more safe, not that it was unsafe.
So does that, is that in place of the, um, boat?
Yes.
Yeah. So that way, if there's an issue, you're on land.
Yeah. Yes. And there are other schools that were ending up on that dinner cruise, um, just adding some layers.
We hear about this every year.
So no more dinner cruise now, it's a hotel dance. That sounds right.
With just our students, um, which is nice. Parent Open House happened, uh, last Thursday. It was a great hit. I think over half of our student, uh, body parents showed up. Uh, they walked their student schedules, got a lot of steps in, um, but overall it was a, a well-received night and, uh, thanks to all the parents that were able to make it out, uh, for our open house. We are doing P S A Ts on October twenty-first, uh, which is our typical approach, the P S A T eight-nine, uh, and series overall. All students will have the opportunity to take the P S A T eight-nine on October twenty-first. And we do, we are welcoming a guest speaker thanks to Dot and Gina. Um, they are coming from IROC two, which is an Institute for Responsible Online and Cellphone Communication. Uh, Dot and I met with this, uh, gentleman, Richard Gary, last week. Um, he's got a lot of energy. He's really excited about, um, you know, what he's coming to, to present on, and it's, it seems like a really great connection for our students to understand, you know, it's not that we're saying these cellphones are bad, but here are some guidelines and helpful ideas to, um, be a healthy, positive, contributing member to the digital world. Um, and I think it's going to be a, a nice start to our school year. He also goes over cybersecurity and cyber bullying, which in October is bullying month, bullying prevention month, and cyber, uh, bullying prevention month. So I think it'll enter October, uh, for us to have some nice things to talk about. Um, and then some important upcoming dates. I will take any questions on the board report before I dive into my goals.
Questions? Sounds like a great plan. I, I assume you'll bring us more details on the D C trip as we move along, right? Don't usually do that later on?
Yep. Yep. Usually, uh.
Price and all that.
February, March.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
And then I do have some small data around. Do we want me to wait for the cellphone conversation or?
Um, if it, I, you can go ahead and give us a little bit of your.
We've had three total cellphones checked into the main office this year. I got some anecdotal data from staff this year, and they feel like even over the last two years, this has been the smoothest start with regards to, uh, middle school students managing their cellphones. Um, I really tried to push encouraging them to use their lockers and backpacks, um, and just, we've been a united front on the cellphones, and it's been a really great start to the year, and kudos to our, our students for rising to the occasion.
And the, just to reiterate to the public, the, the school, the middle school has not allowed cellphones usage. You basically have had a bell-to-bell ban on cellphones in the building.
This is our third year.
Third year of that. So this is not a new thing for the staff or for the students. But our student population changes every two years, so.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
And the middle schoolers, so.
Thanks. And did you want to do building goals now?
Yeah, I can dive right in.
Are there any questions, Patrick, on the cellphone thing?
That's a lot of tabs.
Yeah, I knew you were gonna say something like that.
There's actually a couple more than I have, so I feel better.
Good.
That's about my daily work, on my work computer.
Now you don't see them. My staff will really appreciate that you called me out.
I have a bunch open too. I think I have all of last. I have last month's meeting all here.
I can show you how to create tabs for your tabs.
Okay. I just need to clear out some tabs.
Group tabs, and you can name them something so that.
I kind of want them open.
Happy to show you. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but it's possible. Um, so like to thank Gina and Dot for starting our admin leadership retreat, uh, with going over our, uh, district goals, because, uh, we haven't necessarily done that as a, um, as a leadership group, and it was really helpful for me to just kind of have that shown to us and what they're looking for. Um, so Jake and I, I think, spent some time looking at our district goals and trying to connect some building goals to our district goals. Uh, so goal one connects with our curriculum instruction and assessment, uh, which is implement a systematic semesterly review of student achievement and growth in writing using data-driven practices to identify and meet individual learning needs while continuously improving each student's level of achievement. Um, this is done through direct instruction in our E L A classes, English reading and our writing class. Uh, our English teachers have created common writing rubrics that we're hoping that all classes can use, um, to meet all of our students' needs, uh, here in the building. Uh, we are researching and recommending a writing portfolio this year. That's something we'd like to implement, um, next school year that highlights our student writing samples, and then we're continuing to monitor our writing course. So this really is trying to support the K through six efforts with C K L A and, uh, English and the, uh, writing that's going on down there, as well as some of the work that's going on at the high school. So just trying to do our part in, um, you know, updating, reflecting on our current writing practices, um, just to better meet our students' needs and prepare them for high school and beyond. Goal two, uh, is the student wellness, but I did throw in parentheses and staff wellness. Uh, reviewing and refining our systematic, research-based approach to support the holistic development of all students while fostering positive connections among students and staff. And we're trying to promote a healthy and supportive school climate by prioritizing student and staff wellness. We're doing this through R O C, our everyday classroom, interactions, activities, lessons, our all-school community meetings, and our extracurricular activities, as well as other events such as dances. And goal three, culture and climate. Strengthen our school community by fostering engagement, recognition, and collaboration among students and staff while using newsletters and social media platforms to share information, celebrate achievements, and highlight, uh, the positive stories of H B M S. And we are up and running on Instagram. Um, we are not quite at the level of Brookline, but we will be tapping into those principals over there because they have some creative ideas around Instagram and how we can highlight all the great things that we're doing here at H B M S, um, for students and staff. And we have our Parents Square newsletters that go out every week. So they're just, so, those are just some ways that we're trying to use those platforms to just highlight all the great things that, that really are going on in H B M S, and that happened for a really long time.
Thank you, Patrick. That's great. Why don't you have a seat so we can ask you questions? Because you're not mic'd over there, I don't think, so. So does anyone have any questions for Patrick on building goals and comments? So the focus is writing. It doesn't mean you're not doing other things. It just means like this is the focus of curriculum and, like, investigating curriculum and instruction this particular year.
Correct.
Because I think the whole, the whole district is working towards a, a stronger writing program is my sense from going to the.
They just looked at our S A S data. That was a, an area that.
Right.
We felt like we could really focus on, and again, it, it goes well with what's going on in K through six.
Right. And, um, the strategic plan is on the website underneath Superintendent and the Superintendent's page, and so, um, that's helpful for folks to know that you've, you've picked a few of the areas from the strategic plan. You haven't picked, you haven't, you're not doing all of them, it's just a few goals.
Yep.
Great. Are there any questions on this? I do, I have one question. I know that we're working on it, but, um, the newsletters, uh, the board members don't get the newsletters. We don't get, um, the, we just can't figure it.
So, um, they are all available publicly now, uh, on the website, so every single newsletter that goes out can be viewed by anyone from the public. I forgot to tell them today in leadership that in addition to sending them out, there's a new group that is Co-op School Board, so please add them. And I'm supposed to say, that's my, my fault. I was supposed to share that with you today. So please add the school board, um, along with, you know, the parents, students, and staff.
Sounds good. There used to be one in our previous platform before Parents Square.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And then one other question for, this is just a general communications question. So it sounds like you guys are choosing Instagram as your social media platform, right? So we're not, no longer really gonna, not that we ever were, but we're not looking at Twitter or Facebook or it's just Instagram. Okay. That's fine. I just want to clarify that with.
I think they're pretty straightforward, like ours is H B M S Knights.
Right.
They're all, they all have the same.
H B H S Cavaliers.
Yeah. Okay. Terrific.
And if you just Google.
Right.
S A U Instagram, it will.
Okay. Terrific.
As a non-Instagram person, to what degree is the platform, the way you're using it, um, interactive as opposed to just outward bound?
If you don't have an account, I believe you can't interact, but.
But do you have control over whether something is open for comments and rock throwing or?
They have comments turned off, I think. I'd have to double-check what I mean.
I think there is an ability to turn those things off, but I, I don't think I've turned mine off for the middle school. Because I'm getting occasional likes with the two things that I posted.
I, I think if you turn off comments, you'd still get likes, but whether or not you get comments, I don't know if you can turn off comments on Instagram, but.
I'm not sure. I know who to ask.
Yeah. So we do need to figure that piece out. But the one thing that's nice about Instagram is.
You can get likes without comments. You can turn off comments and still get likes. You have both on.
Sweet.
And Instagram doesn't have quite as much opportunity for a lot of language. It's much, it's much more just like a picture, you know, it's more like.
Pictures are quick.
Pictures are quick, quick. It's a quicker, you know, more like a publicity thing, like, than it is a lot of digging in.
And who's managing it at, at your site?
Building principals.
Exclusively?
Building principals.
The Cavaliers still has everything on too.
I mean, it's, it's nice. I think it's really nice to see it in us catching. I watch a lot of, follow a lot of other districts and for the most part a vast, vast majority of comments and feedback are all positive or informational or questions. So, you know, there's going to be the opportunity for not so wonderful comments, but I think the getting information out there in the way that students and parents and our community see it far outweighs it. As long as it's not bogging down our administrators to manage it, but.
I don't mean to speak off out of term, but I do believe that if a comment comes across that is really vulgar or inappropriate, you can delete it. I think you're able to go in and delete a comment if it's something that really is completely off. So, but you have to be careful when doing that because, you know, you can only delete things that are really bad. And you have to determine that, so. But thank you for that. Great.
Of course.
Any other questions? Okay. Jake?
We also had a great start to the school year. This is my first year at the high school. Getting to see how the year kicked off has been fantastic and the things that we do. Getting up on the roof to take the classic twenty-nine picture was exciting.
Did you do it yourself?
I was, I was up there with Geskis. We couldn't get the hatch open, so we got a ladder. I'm afraid of heights, but I love them, so that was exciting. But things have gone, this is my third building that I've been principal at and it's, it's the smoothest start to a school year that I've had. And that's compliments to previous administration, the teachers and just the district as a whole. We've got some really good systems and structures in place to help success. So it's been fantastic. The energy's been great in the halls with teachers and with kids. So it's, it's been a great start to the year. Our PSAT testing is Wednesday, October fifteenth for our juniors. We also open up to some sophomores and we have approximately forty sophomores who have signed up to take advantage of that exam as well. From last year's PSAT, we actually this year have three national merit semifinalists, so that's pretty exciting. So Arwin Fang, Ben Hayduk and Molly Morsey are among, it's like a one percent, it's like one point three million students who take the exam qualify and so sixteen thousand out of them. So it's pretty fantastic to have three of them in one year. So we did a nice little congratulations to them in the counseling office last week and how they get to move forward and apply to be finalists to get some scholarships. And then something that I think is, is really great that we do as we start off the school year at the high schools, we hold class meetings to just get everyone on the same page. Any new policies and procedures, talk about the day-to-day stuff and just really start the year off on a positive, clear note of what the expectations are. And it went really well. Ms. Flaminow, Mr. Etten and Ms. Lane were fantastic in kind of running those. They let me talk about cell phones and they kind of handled everything else. But it's really nice. The kids were great. They asked some wonderful questions around the new cellphone policy. And it was a really nice dialogue to have with the students that, you know, it's kind of impacting on a day-to-day basis. So a great way to start off the school year. We had our open house last week. Everyone told me like, not too many people come. The outdoor room is filled. I got all nervous. It was great. So we had a really nice turnout. I had some great feedback from parents about just the energy in the building, the energy with the teachers. So it was really nice to hear that again. They could all be lying. I have no idea, but it was nice to hear and to have those. And then we have our important dates there at the bottom as well.
It looks like you have the Applied New Hampshire Day coming again, which is great.
And this year is prior to the November first deadline, which is great.
And then I believe Challenge Day is coming up on November nineteenth. I had one of the teachers say something to me at the opening day that, you know, asking if there would be board members who would want to participate in that. So I'm just letting the board know that that's usually a day that we can have.
Yeah, we kind of just rolled that out at our staff meeting today. Beth Sulan kind of made the announcement of the date and everything. I think twenty-five adults is what we need, so.
There's usually, just to let them, there's usually like maybe one or two board members will attend, like we've, some of us have gone before. Great, thank you. Do you want to give us a little bit, do you have any feedback on?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is there going to be a student rep coming to meetings? Do you know?
Yeah, there definitely will be because it's a law that you have to have a student rep. I'll talk with student council. I'm not sure how they did it last year.
Yeah, it's typically our student body president and student body vice president that either rotate or.
Have they been chosen?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I think one of them came last year at the end. I thought one of them came in, yeah. The new person came, so we just need to, just have to get them coming again. So do you want to do building goals or would you like to, do you have any feedback from the cell phones?
I, I do. I have feedback and data. So again, I've heard a lot of, a lot of positives from teachers. I had a parent reach out after open house that said, I can't come to the board meeting, but we love it. We think it's a great policy. And then, so we have fifty-two total offenders on the first offense, so they've been asked to put their phone away. I've got it breakdown by grade level if you would like that as well.
I think fifty-two is fine. I don't think we need grade level.
I would like to hear it because I'm just curious if the, if the kids that came from the middle school.
So it's two freshmen, twelve sophomores, twenty-five juniors and thirteen seniors.
Oh. I thought this was going to be the seniors. We're going to be like.
Out of those fifty-two students, ten of them got a second offense, one of the freshmen, six of the juniors, three of the seniors. And out of those ten, one junior got their third offense. So that's, that's where we're at with the, with the data. And that was as of two-thirty this afternoon, so.
That's interesting. Thank you. And the feedback has been positive from-
I can get it for you if you want to sit so you can hear it from the mic.
Oh, yeah. Do I have your shirt with you or do you have it?
I think it's on the.
Okay.
On the, the data you've collected.
Tom, can you speak into your microphone? I think people have a hard time hearing you. I've heard that.
Hard time to get hearing aid. Works for me.
I think it's just your voice, so you have to make sure you go into. Stop whispering, man.
Did, was, was it primarily teachers who were?
Teachers and administration. It depends. So in the classroom, it's been primarily teachers. In study halls and in the hallways and lunch, it's been administrators.
Well, I guess my question is, does it seem to be in the classroom or is it in more?
Mainly in the classroom that we're finding, finding it, yeah.
In terms of the positive feedback you've gotten, has that mostly been from staff as well or did you, you heard from some parents as well?
Just that one parent had reached out. Most of it is from staff that have talked about how positive it is.
And have the kids said anything?
No student has come up to thank me yet. I'm waiting.
So I just keep feedback from others too. Anecdotally, I had a friend of mine say that she went to open house and every teacher asked the parents in the room, so are you hearing complaints at home? So this is completely anecdotally. It's just one woman and she said, in every class she went to, the parents were like, no, the kids are like, it's fine. It's all good. Like it's the rule and we're following it, so.
And, you know, they get off the bus and they're on it and then they walk in the door and the bell rings and it's away. And then at two-thirty when the bell rings, they see them rush out to the bus with their phone out. No one's bumped into anything, so. But it's been, it's been good.
Are you seeing active engagement among the students and?
I, I, the cafeteria is loud with, in a good way. You know, kids are talking to each other. I didn't know that bottle flipping was back. That's the thing kids are doing again because they need to. So we're, a lot of bottle flipping with their water bottles. It's fun, but it's a, I mean, you're talking to kids in the hall. You're seeing them talking to each other. So I, it is, it's positive when you observe that.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, so your goals now.
Uh, building goals, again, similar thing. You know, I took the goals that we discussed at the leadership meeting and I, I looked for spots where, where we could do some work aligning with them. So Goal One, we focused on the culture and climate and we want to foster a positive school climate and culture for students and staff by promoting and providing opportunities for connections. This was kind of natural as we go into year two of advisory. We did some great work with the alts team over the summer to really bolster that program. But then we also look for those other opportunities to create connections as well. Cav block support within the classrooms, school-wide celebrations, attending athletics and co-curriculars. We all know that kids really love when their teachers come and watch them in those events, just encouraging those moments and, and providing opportunities for those connections to happen. Goal Two was the curriculum instruction and assessment. We're going to work to develop enhanced effective systems of feedback, reflection and growth. I'm a huge proponent of reflection, feedback and growth as an educator. And so we really think that this looks different at different levels, but teachers working with students, teachers working with their colleagues, administrators working with teachers and administrators working together. But developing effective, actionable feedback, taking time to reflect on that and then ability to grow. You know, my belief as an educator is everyone within a school building, student and teacher can grow on some level. And so I look for opportunities to create that growth. And then finally, the communication and climate and culture. We're utilizing the weekly newsletters and our new Instagram page at HBHS Cavaliers to disseminate information, tell our story and celebrate students and staff. When we talk about the Instagram page, that's really where we're just like celebrating. Hopefully there's not moments for negative comments when you're just putting out the stuff that's like great. I don't know if my, I hope my Constitution post today wasn't controversial. It's just a nice Constitution day. And then the newsletter is really where we're looking to, to kind of pump out the, the information. So that's, that's what we're looking to do. With, I did a lot with social media at my last district. You know, we were looking at five to six posts a week. So I'm looking to bolster a little bit. So my ways of highlighting students and highlighting staff in the building and really kind of getting after it that way. That allows me to meet more kids and get to know the teachers a little bit better, but then just really celebrating the great stuff we do. So that's my pie in the sky. Wish, we'll see how that goes as the grind starts happening, so.
Well, I know that the, the Cav Boosters, which is a separate organization, but they do a really, they, at least the woman who's been doing it has done a great job in the last like three to five, three years, four years really posting our sports and our athletics.
Yeah, the athletic page is great. I looked at that a lot when, when we were going through the, the interview process. I followed that a lot to see kind of some of that stuff. So I'm hoping to kind of add the other side of it and really showcase what's happening in the classrooms.
Absolutely. That sounds great. Are there any questions for Jake on any of this? Go ahead.
Jake, I know it being your first year here, it's unlikely that the contrast, any contrast will be particularly obvious. But last year we introduced the bringing teachers back into managed study halls. And one of the feedback that we've, we've gotten has been around concerns in cav block that some teachers don't have them or whatever. I'm just wondering whether that's escalating or people are getting used to it, just just how that is.
I wouldn't say escalating, but the conversation has continued. It's definitely not ideal. I think that how a high school study hall functions doesn't necessarily make it a super ideal place to create connections with kids on that level. So we have two less teachers this year doing study halls than we did last year so that we could have two more doing cav blocks. They would love more opportunities to have cav block instead of study halls.
The teachers?
Yes. I think it, and students as well. I think it's something that we could continue to have a conversation about. But that staff has continued that conversation with me as the, the new guy gathering the information.
Weren't you, were you attending a meeting and you saw the kids' presentation on that? Yeah, so.
I, I, I think if it's possible, I would like to see us put something on the agenda to actually talk about that. Because what I don't necessarily know is being publicized is the thought process behind it. We hear a lot about what's not happening, but I want to make sure that, that the reasons that the change was instituted are understood and either validated or found to not be happening.
Great. Oh, it's six forty-four, so I'm now closing the public input at six forty-four PM. Thank you, Kate. Just a quick question. So curriculum instruction and assessment, the board has sat in on a grading and assessment committee. That was a subcommittee of our instructional practices overseeing committee. Is that something that we're going to start up again or, I mean, because it has been sort of in a, advisory sort of took a lot of energy last year, so we kind of haven't been doing that, so.
No, I think that is absolutely one of my goals for Dot to take over because it is a whole co-op conversation. And so I think it makes sense for her to look, lead that conversation about grading and assessment. Right now, while we are, we have these goals that are directly tied to the work of that committee and those goals are in both buildings. So I would like to see that subcommittee.
Yeah, and I believe we're already assigned to it. I forget who's on it, but we have some members who are already assigned to the grading and assessment subcommittee, so.
I love being part of a group, so.
Yeah, let's meet you.
Let's go.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on building goals? Any other questions for Patrick? Let's try, we can move on to discussion and then I think we're going to let you go soon. Is that the deal? Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Yeah, I got you. I, I, I heard. Somebody, a little bug told me that, so. But I'd love for you to stay. We're going to move on to the discussion portion of the evening and that's the bell to bell ban on cell phones. I think we've already covered everything, but in case the board has other questions or comments on that, so, or administrators, anybody? Anything?
Is, is this?
I've moved to discussion. Bell to bell ban on cell phones.
We're still going to have discussion around the policy itself.
We are. We'll talk about the policy. I did have a couple of questions. One comment was made to me that we've banned in the, in the handbook, we have a ban on headphones. And so obviously there are opportunities that kids need to use an actual plug in a headphone to a Chromebook if they're working on like a translation or maybe they've got to watch a video for research or whatever. So that might need, maybe we need the word wireless in the handbook. Maybe we need to make that little change because we mean, I assume we mean headphones that can connect to the internet. So that might be a small change.
Can the headphones?
Yeah, those, all those ear pods and those, those big, yeah, they all can, they, they, they wirelessly connect through Bluetooth to like the internet.
So that they don't have to go through a device to get there? They have their own?
They have to go through like a cellphone, but like why would you have them if you weren't connected to your cell phones? You could have your cellphone in your backpack.
But they're the same headphones that you would use for the purpose that you want to support as by-
Well, no, you'd use a wired headphone for your, you'd use, you'd actually plug into the computer. A wireless headphone would connect.
I understand the difference between them, but you can use a wireless headphone with a laptop, with a Chromebook as well.
So I think a main point of the law was to bring back, at least what I'm reading, and it came out again in the technical advisory, was to bring back a focus on engaging in instruction. And so we wanted, I, I think based on some things I've heard at my recent meeting with the state level superintendents, there's a focus on engaging in the classroom, engaging in discussion and not having anyone, whether it's the teacher or the administrator, be the cellphone police. So part of that can't be, wait, what are you listening to? Can I listen to it? Can I not? And so I think it, we're really trying to take away anything that could cause questions around the use and, so that we can manage it. Because if, if they're using headphones for French class because they're listening to something, then we know that they're using wired headphones as opposed to connecting to their phones and listening to music.
But I guess my point is, why don't we treat that like we do with the devices where if there's an, an instance where headphones are required, we should be supplying the headphones. They should not be personal headphones.
And oftentimes we do.
Yep, so I, I just think if it's, if it's a personal.
But the handbook says no headphones, so that's.
So we're going to amend the language?
We have to amend the language in the handbook to at least say like either, either has to say like district provided headphones.
There's the terminology, personal versus.
Right, so no personal headphones. If that's, if that's where we're at, if we have enough headphones to provide headphones.
Well, we have to, we have to get them.
It also gets tied into personal devices and that, like because if students are using personal, like that's, that's in question or being questioned. So if they're using their own personal laptop, sometimes they already have headphones. So it is, it's putting a burden on parents to buy something if it's not, I don't, I understand not policing it up, but kids can still be on a computer and still be listening to the, even if it's wired. Like there's still policing part to this. It's a lot harder to.
Yeah, but they're, I, I, I see it as that they're using the headphones because of a te, teacher is saying, put your headphones on, we're going to look at this content that's specific to a, a delivery of education.
Or in a language, but my only point is I, I don't think they, that kids, if we're not letting cell phones in, we're not letting laptops in, we shouldn't be letting headphones or earbuds or any of that in.
Right.
And if, and if there's, if there's instances when they're needed, we provide, we provide one-to-one devices. We should provide the headphones where they are and I don't think it's going to be a budget buster.
Well, that's, that's part of, you know, carrying out the.
Yeah, no, I, I, the, all I'm saying is it was brought up to me and we do need to figure out, we need to figure that out. And the handbook says no headphones.
HBO still has money. No, I'm serious. They, they've, we haven't met in three years, but last time we met, they were trying to find out what's, what does a school need?
So it's just something to take, we can take it back to the policy committee, but I just, the handbook, it says no headphones, but then obviously there are going to be opportunities that kids have to use a headphone. So it doesn't work in the handbook. So that's the only piece that has to change in the handbook. What it says, what kind of headphones the handbook says, that's up to the building management to decide.
If it's regarding, I mean, if it's, if, if we're going to rely on the school supplying things for, for academic and educational purposes, does it, does the handbook have to change?
I, I think it does because when we just say no headphones and then you're in class and the teacher's like, put on these headphones, it's like, what else can I break? Like, like what other rule can I violate, right? So for just a little bit more specific, even if it says district issued or, you know, there, we have a number of exceptions and we've made various accommodations and we're not saying that they're necessarily using cell phones, but there's alternative devices.
Okay, so we have other instances where the language differentiates between student supplied and school supplied?
I'm not saying that that's the, the answer that we're going for, but being a little bit more specific about how and when you can use them. But generically speaking, there are no wireless headsets, headphones, whatever we want to call them these days. I don't even know. Earbuds?
It's not just earbuds. It's those big, it's those big Beats and things like that that you could literally walk around all day in and be connected to your phone and no, your phone wouldn't be out. Like you could have those on your ears and your phone's not out, but you could be listening to music the whole time.
And you're totally disengaged.
Right, so. So that's why we said no headphones, because we were avoiding those, but then we also have this other. So any feedback from the building principals on that?
I, I appreciate the mention of, you know, teachers that, that do want to use them and that's conversations we've had with our teachers in our building, especially world language who do a lot of listening and speaking. First-year students with a language, speaking and listening is a really important part, but when you're trying to speak and listen with twenty-five students and sometimes they are taking assessments on their computers, it's, it's been a good conversation, but I think we're just kind of trying to figure out the direction that we should go. Personally, I do think it should be district provided because at least in the middle school, there's a lot that goes into, you know, middle schoolers managing those things. And if we just give them to them, it's a little bit more onus on them to, to take care of them. But I, I go back and forth with, if we should buy them, should they have the ability to buy something that's comparable? Because that, so it's, I don't have an answer. It's been a lot of conversations about headphones with a few teachers. But just some sort of direction on what you guys really think we should be doing either from us or should we allow students to bring in their own wired headphones?
Is, are there other times where a kid might need to, like I'm just thinking like I'm writing a research paper. I need to watch a, you know, an educational film that's completely been vetted through the website, through the Chromebook, and I want to sit in my study hall and I want to, you know, watch this film or this debate or this something so that I can, you know, use it as a source. Like, is that something that kids would do? Like, does that make sense? Is that a legitimate? Is that a legitimate question?
Yes, and that's.
So then kids are in the study hall and they want to plug in and do that.
Can't watch YouTube though, because it's blocked during the day.
Well, I know you can't watch YouTube, but I'm saying.
The vast majority of videos that they would watch, they can't even watch during the.
But I'm just saying, like, maybe they could access something on an educational website that.
Or if you have students taking Velax, and Velax has a lot of videos embedded in their coursework.
And there's also books on, books on tape, bu- books on, and there, and you don't necessarily have to have a plan to access audiobooks. And, you know, those pieces, and there are students that prefer to listen to books during study hall. And those pieces too, that's some feedback that I've been getting. So those are bigger conversations, you know, that.
So, I mean, it would make, it almost seems like we would have to district supply everyone with a pair of headphones that they would have in their possession. Like, instead of having them just in classrooms, we'd have to almost like buy enough headphones to give every kid a headphone.
Why? I don't understand how you're making that jump.
Or you, I guess you'd have to have them available. I don't know. I guess I'm a little.
I'm going to share.
Cleanliness.
Can you share?
I, no, I'm sorry. I'm going to say no. You cannot share. I'm sorry. I'm going to say that as a parent and an administrator.
The same thing you do in, in, in lab, in labs, they, you just take a, a wipe and you wipe, you wipe them off.
I think it kind of depends on what.
We have to trust the students to do that.
No, you're not going in ear. You want to go over ear because you want to have isolation as well.
So we're going to let them figure that out.
It's a common technology utilized in, in, in language education.
Right. Okay. So clearly, any other comments?
No, I was just going to say sort of one last suggestion is maybe you do sort of a hybrid. Students have the option of bringing in an approved headset that is wired and you put parameters around that. But you can also have inexpensive, and they're, they are out there. We've used them at our school, you know, just the earbuds. It's like the airline earbuds. They're wired, you plug them in, they go in the ears. You don't want them back. You know, you give, if the students need them at a given time, they're throwaways. They're inexpensive. You give them to them, you tell them to hang on to them and use them as long as they last. And so maybe just have that kind of option.
Yeah, okay. Yes, absolutely. I think we're good, Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on?
Yeah, I think there's more discussion needed around that and how we actually institute it. Because there's a lot of holes in those use cases, I can see, whether.
Yeah, I think, I think this is more of a.
What happens when the technology doesn't make wired earphones anymore? Then what do we do? And then we got to open up the policy again.
So I think that's why we, we kind of have to give the, we need to give the leadership team, I think this is, we've given them the feedback. I think that's all you need to figure out where to move from there. That was the only real thing that I saw in the handbook or that was brought to my attention that concerned me. And then we are not allowing personal laptops anymore, right?
Correct.
And that's because those can be used as.
Do we have, I couldn't find any reference to what I thought was a, our bring your own device policy.
I couldn't find it either. We don't have that policy.
Was it removed? Because we, it was, it was talked about in many, many instances that are, we have a bring your own device policy.
I think it was really more of a procedure. I don't think it was ever a policy.
Okay, if it was a procedure, where was it? Where had it been? Has it been deleted?
Well, it would have gotten changed from last year's handbook because we don't do it anymore, or two years ago or three years ago.
I, I think we should have one. Then could, could the policy committee look into whether there is a template for bring your own device?
So our policy would be that you can't?
That you can't, right?
I know, but we need to have a policy. We, we have nothing anywhere that, that, that says you can't.
Right. So Gina and Dot are actually, we just talked about this the other day, are bringing forward kind of all the policies that have some reference to devices, both for staff and students as far as utilizing your own versus schools. So I know that, that they're being gathered and those are coming to the policy committee within the next month because.
I did a, a keyword search on the full list of, of co-op policies on, I did, I looked at bring, I looked at device. And there's nothing in there that comes close to addressing what we want, though.
Right. No, I thi- I think that that's true and we can, and we'll definitely, you know, Dot and Gina, I'll, we'll tell Gina, you know, about the bring your own device. But there are other pieces of other policies though that reference sort of utilizing personal devices. It may not be bring your own, but it's personal device. It's listed differently. And, yeah, so I know those are going to be brought forward to policy committee, but we can definitely bring up making a, creating a new policy for bring your own device.
I just don't want to delay on it because when we, when we get to the policy on cellphones, I'm going to recommend taking the reference to laptops out of it. Because within the context of the law, a laptop does not meet the criteria of a personal communication device.
It, it does because if you log in, like, if you log into your iCloud or you log into whatever on a Mac, you can use it to text. And you could use it to make a phone call. You actually could. My children, you know. So it does qualify. So it would fall under both. It would fall under both policies. If you had a bring your own device, definitely would follow that too. But it does belong in, I, I would argue, it does belong in the, so, in the personal communication.
You can text on a Mac.
You can absolutely text.
You can text on anything that connects to the internet.
Well, and that's what the.
And that's what this policy is supposed to be.
And the technical advisory said, nothing that connects to the internet. They can't have anything that connects to the internet unless it's for curricular purposes only. That was in the technical advisory. I sent that to you guys.
Then we're going to have to expand the list then. Because there are other things that we don't explicitly deny that can connect.
Like what?
And I think in the policy, when we get to the policy, you'll see it too. I mean, I don't, I don't know that it says inclusive of. We can, we can put the phrase not necessarily inclusive of and list as much as we can list. The, the tech, technical advisory too, which I don't know if the policy committee, if we're, but the technical advisor has two paragraphs in there. One specifically describing cellphone and one specifically describing other devices. And that's pretty extensive. I was looking at that the other day a little bit more closely.
They sent that to you, Tom.
I read it.
So the policy committee and the board may want to look at those two paragraphs and then decide whether or not to expand even on those if they wanted to. But those, but that's how they're being defined. And it does include laptops, other devices in a more extensive list.
Is there something else that you think we'd have to, like, besides?
There are, but I, I don't want to rip through now. I mean, that, that's, I want to see how you're going to approach it. But if we're going to have a, if you, if you start taking everything that can potentially connect to the internet and therefore call it a communication device, I think you're going to run into other challenges and issues of, whereas, but I think more importantly, even if you're not connecting to the internet, we had an issue where we did not want personal computers being brought in and used for a variety of reasons that extend well beyond this, this ruling and this policy. And I, I don't want our exclusion of laptops to be, of personal laptops to be dependent on this.
The one.
I understand. I, I completely understand. I wrote bring your own device policy. Like, we, we'll bring that to the policy committee and, and develop that for, for reasons outside of the cellphone usage policy. Like, there's a reason that we don't want those laptops.
I'm commenting more about the pro, the investigation that Lauren described ongoing. And I suspect that that may take longer than I would like to see us ta- wait to have the B, the B Y D.
So when we get to policy, we'll talk a little bit about all of this, a little bit more. But let's try to move forward so that we can let other people go. Are we good with that? We'll move on. We'll talk more about the policy specifically when we get to the policy section, which is an deliberative device. Jacob, at this point, since your other principal left, you are welcome to go as well.
Missed and listened, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. So moving forward, the MOU. Somebody want to talk about that for me?
Sure. So, sorry.
Well, I, I don't think I'm talking about it, so.
So this is the, this is an MOU that I believe is reviewed annually between the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District and the Police Department regarding the goals and objectives for the school resource officer. I don't know if the board members have seen this prior, previous years.
We see it every year.
I don't believe it has changed from last year to, to this year. So we can go through it if you'd like, or if you have any questions, we can review it.
I think we can just do questions. We've done, we look at this every year. So are there any questions on this?
So we're not making any changes to it?
There's no changes to it.
There's no changes. It's the same as it's always been.
Do we currently have an exclusive SRO for the co-op? We used to share with the Hollis Elementary, and I thought last year they separated the two.
Yeah, I think so.
We do.
Okay. So we're, and are we fully funding it?
That I do not know the answer to. I thought it was split. It says it here. I thought it was split. And I think it is here.
It's split forty percent with the town of Hollis, sixty percent with co-op.
Okay.
But we used to split that fifty percent with Hollis School District. We're not, we're fully funding our fifty percent.
The school portion of it.
Yes, the school portion of it.
We would be fully funding that. Okay. If there are no further questions on that, we have a facilities committee update.
Well, the facilities committee didn't meet, but they did an awful lot of stuff. And that was why I was hoping Gina was going to, to be here and we were going to talk about it. But from what was communicated to us, Eversource dramatically changed their story on what the cost would be to grid tie. It went from an estimated less than half a million dollars to over a million and a half dollars. So the decision was made by administratively to abandon grid tie completely for the high school and go with the battery option so they can move forward with the approval plan, so that they can start getting stuff on site. And to downgrade the plan for the middle school so that it could stay below the threshold of, of, of being able to stay grid tied without overtaxing the existing substation. So the plan has changed. I don't know what it has changed to, and I don't know what the cost implications are.
To be continued.
To be continued.
Pardon me?
To be continued.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to it. And do, do we have any sense of why the big uptick in costs to grid tie?
Well, before, they had told us that the system could handle it.
Yeah.
And then when they actually reviewed the plan most recently, they told us, can't.
Can't.
So in terms of the facilities committee, like, the job of the facilities committee at this point, like, is it the job of the facilities committee to, I mean, this, this whole project should be managed at the S A U level, right? Like, that's the, the superintendent's role and the director of facilities role to manage the project at this point. Is this, the charter of the facilities committee was to get this going, to get the bond passed, to move forward. And then the next steps for the facilities committee, I would think, would be?
What the administration had asked us to continue doing was to resolve this question about the form that it was going to take at the high school. And we had, had, the last meeting that we had, which would have been August, we had some questions that were not answered sufficiently to allow us to make a recommendation to the, the board and the administration. It's unclear how, what the administration seeks from the board versus what they want to do autonomously as far as deciding, making decisions. But clearly, they're now comfortable making the decision autonomously without the board's input. And I'm not saying that with any.
No, it's, that's what should happen at this point. Like, that's what happens once we pass the bond. Yeah.
So at this point, the facilities committee is more of a conduit of information from the administration on these topics to the board.
That's what I, that's what I was thinking it would be.
And I think that's important because if the aspects of the project changes, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be necessarily comfortable for them to autonomously make decisions. And because we sold a certain project to the commit, to the community. And, you know, I would be sensitive to changes that inflate the costs or changes that don't deliver what we said we were going to deliver.
Well, and I don't, and again, it's because it, we authorized the bond. The project is now, we authorized them to start purchasing stuff. And at this point, there's nothing else over which we have authority. We may have opinions, but we don't have authority.
The dollars are our authority.
No, we've, as long as they stay within the bond.
Right. As long as it doesn't go, as long as, right. And I think in the past, like, when we had the turf field project, for example, the former superintendent ran that project and then he just came to us and said, we're underrunning by X number of dollars. Should I, would the board be on board with me expanding to put in a parking lot or buy a sport, buy a, buy the scoreboard? So I don't necessarily, I mean, I think the facility, the role of the facility committee is exactly what you said, Tom. Like, a conduit for information for the board, but not a decision-making body at this point regarding this. But the next phase might be what's next. Like, you've got the cap, like, what's the next, after this is done, is there start to, like, and do you need to meet monthly?
That's what we're expecting the facilities director to bring to us at the next meeting is, is the what's next.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're aligned. I think that it, we're, we're looking at this as aggregate, compile, and then advise.
Right. That's kind of what I was just wondering.
Just to backtrack to Ross, my comment about, I don't know what impact it has on the money. By that, I don't mean that I think that they may be overexceeding. The way that they're going to do it is they're going to work within the budget. So what I don't know is whether there's going to be a compromise on performance such that the payback period changes.
Right. And, and we would want to know that and bring that to the board and say, hey, the story is different now.
We need to know it, but we don't have a role in the decision.
Yeah.
Right. And it also, it also allows it in this forum to become more public.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right? Because although we're, we're a public committee, you know, no one's paying a lot of attention.
No one pays attention to us.
But I, I just want, I want the administration to hear from us that, you know, they're, they're moving this forward. That's their role, as the superintendent's office, the facilities director, that's their role. And the committee is more for information. And obviously, if they want your opinion and, and advice, it's not.
It, it's a good forum to just hash things out and stay on the same page.
That sounds great. Well, thank you for that. Thanks for that update. Any other questions on the facilities committee update? Great, thank you. Moving forward to the budget committee update. We have lots of updates.
We did meet, we had our audit report, and the audit report goes back two years, two years from the current year, from the year we're in. So it was for the year that I think concluded in twenty twenty-four. And it was, in, for the time that I've been involved, it was the best outcome that I have heard reported. The legacy work that, that Kelly had, had done in creating data collection and reporting is really paying dividends in terms of clarity and the ability to efficiently conduct the audit. So he, he was very complimentary. The one thing that continues to be highlighted, actually two things. One is food service fund balance target is approximately thirty percent. We're currently ru- running it seventy-five percent, and it's much higher. And a lot, a lot of that has to do with things that are not really in our control because some of it depends on what kids choose to purchase and buy and how many meals they sell, all sorts of things. It also is, is dependent on the cost of foods and things have been very volatile, especially post-COVID. And with the changing directives on state and federal level as to what comprises a, an appropriate meal and, and menu. But it's still something we have to work on. We raised, we raised the, the fees a little bit last year because we had to, because our fees were too low. But that just exacerbated the problem.
So we have more money than we need, yeah.
Yeah. And, and we can't lower the cost because there's other, it's competing directives. So I don't know where it's going to go, but there may, there may be proposals to come back to us to provide further investments into our food services area specifically to, to draw down on that surplus. So, and the other thing was the, the whole issue of Fund twenty-three. So, and the other thing was the, the whole issue of Fund Twenty-three, which is a miscellaneous fund that, or a general fund that collects from all sorts of different areas. And that fund includes money that has been earmarked for special purposes, some of which are not even relevant, but we can't spend the money on anything but those topics. One of the suggestions was to look at moving some of those funds into trusts. And the reason for that is it would just simplify the audit process. Once they're in a trust, they, they no longer become an audited element. And, and therefore, it simplifies the audit, lowers the cost and makes it more efficient. Plus, it, it takes an element out of the reports. So that is something that I think is going to be looked at in the VA's office and may come, come back to us. It, it may require some complexity at, at district meetings because to create a trust, I think it has to be authorized by the.
The voters.
By the voters. And whenever you get into doing that, you know, there's a, why are we making a trust? Why aren't we spending this money? So it may be something that we have to address in an upcoming one. Darlene spent quite a bit of time looking at legislative updates that have come through. For those of you that, that read the emails from the New Hampshire School Board Association, there are upcoming webinars about it. I would strongly encourage people to sign up for them. They're usually an hour, hour and a half. If you sign up for them, even if you don't participate, you can, you can view them at your leisure. They usually get recorded. But there's, there's just so much stuff coming through and it's going to have pretty big impacts on us. Everything from the tax impact to the tax cap overrides and changes to speaking time for the, the, the district meeting. They, I think in direct response to what we did, they put through and passed a law that says that the first name on a petition warrant article is to be treated as the petitioner and is guaranteed ten minutes, ten minutes regardless. I mean, we don't, we as the presenters don't usually give ourselves ten minutes. So you got seven petition warrant articles. That's seventy minutes of time that is mandatorily added to our meeting. So just something to keep in mind. There was a approval to add the cost per pupil and proficiency scores to all, to all budget warrant articles, to budget warrants. That, one of the things that did happen is this whole open enrollment thing where they were, there was an attempt to try and make it so that any person could essentially demand that, that you let them in your school. That did, that did not occur.
That's in the past.
So open enrollment, you can engage in agreements with other districts, but you are not required to. So it, we, we still have the control over that. Special education, catastrophic aids now be funded at eighty percent. Whether anyone will actually get the money is a separate issue. And then the, the Educational Freedom Act, it can be ten thousand dollars for, for stu, for families. They can sign up for it. There was a, what was it, thirty-nine million dollars funded and fifty-one, I think it was fifty-one million authorized so far with, with a waiting list of approximately five thousand students.
How much is it going to cost? Fifty-one million? Or they don't know?
They don't know. They don't know. And there isn't, it's, there is, they have already, they have already spent more than they budgeted for on it.
And they also, I think, removed any kind of income level on that. Right. Thanks for that. Darlene does a great job of that kind of summary I read, the Hollis Budget Committee minutes, and she did the same summary there. So.
Yeah, if you want more detail, just, you can review the, fill out the recording of the meeting.
And, and the meeting. So, Tom, you can't vote on that committee anymore, so we don't have a say on the budget committee. Is it, one of the things that I spoke to Darlene about is maybe having a few meetings where a budget committee member attends one of our meetings. They're not mandated to do that, but it might be helpful for them to see.
She mentioned it at the meeting.
Okay.
Everyone thought it was a good idea for someone else to do it.
Okay. Okay. So maybe I will talk to the superintendent about like which agendas, maybe which months might be a good, like, time for me to extend an actual invitation from the chair of the school board to the committee to see if there's someone.
I think it would be probably more productive if you formally scheduled some joint sessions.
Okay. Okay. Like with both, with both groups. Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that probably does make more sense. Okay.
As far as the voting goes, for us, it's symbolic. I don't think there's been an instance in my experience. Cindy was one of the more contentious boards and committees than I was, but that was where the board vote would have made a difference. The biggest difference is that I can't contribute to a quorum. So there's instances when we either can't have a meeting or can't start a meeting because not enough people can get there. And I can't make up the quorum.
Makes sense. Okay. Well, thank you for that. Any questions for Tom on the budget committee? All right. Rob asked to have the capital expenditure advisory committee update.
Also known as the CEAC.
CEAC. It doesn't even have a good, like, it doesn't, like.
I was not involved.
CAC? Like, what do you call it? Like, I don't like it.
Once you go beyond three letters.
It's too many, too many letters.
It has to be, be a word.
Yeah. Okay. So go ahead, Tom.
Seek. You shall follow.
So I'll try to keep this short and sweet. So as you may know, and just for people at home and new, this is a new committee that has been formed as of the town march meeting.
Of Hollis, the town of Hollis only?
Yeah, that formed this. And it's charters essentially to gather and summarize the major capital expenditures of the, between the town of Hollis, Hollis School District, and also the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District. And those expenditures that may use bonds as a source of funding. So, um, so we met on September second to organize and chart a course of what we want to do and how we want to do it. Mark Kost is the acting chair. I believe Mark is the member of the Budcom, of the Hollis Budcom. And we, early on, emphasized the need to get some kind of a summary view of what's happening by the November timeframe. Because I, I kind of advised that committee that if you wait much longer, the budget committee, that train is chugging down the tracks and you better get there early or you're, it's going to be too late to advise anybody. So that was accepted. And so it's understood that we, at least by November, early November or mid-November, want to bring a preliminary view of what we know. It may be somewhat incomplete because even though there's expenditure plans, it doesn't necessarily mean that it'll be funded and a bond be floated. It could, some of these expenditures can be worked out of budgets and things like that. And that's what I advised with the information that I gave for the co-op. Because we don't have those funding discussions until we decide and have conversations with the budget committee and things like that. And, and eventually, you know, a discussion takes place where, well, why don't you bundle these expenditures that you wanted to do? Is this a good time to bond? Or don't do it. It's not a good time to bond. So those conversations still have to take place. But I, I feel strongly, we can still bring a view that our district stakeholders can take and group, and at least have the understanding of what's happening in the other districts and maybe the reasons for their initiatives and what's happening. So that's, that's kind of the approach we're taking. We also met on the fifteenth of September, just this Monday. I was providing some information regarding the multi-year CIP that we have. And also cost details around the Article One and Two, which are our energy articles, and giving those new debt services that we added. I did add and let the committee know that we structured that project such that six hundred thousand dollars of payments were coming, of debt service were coming off our books. And we tried to structure those projects that it would basically replace and not exceed that. So to keep the, the impact to taxpayers zero. That was our goal. So the next time we meet, I'm going to bring a little bit more information. I'll have to work with maybe Gina or somebody. I think it's good practice to maybe go through you.
Right.
But things that I'll be bringing forward were, um, let's see, provide how capital is handled. Oh, yeah. So one question was how capital is handled at the co-op based on our apportionment agreement, things like that. So I want to bring correct detail around that. Some of the balances of our, our, our trust funds that we would potentially tap to do some expenditures relating to capital improvements, things like that. Oh, the other question, and we could have this discussion next time. But in terms of a CIP that extends about beyond five years, I think the town does ten. I think that's a little bit much myself because to have a plan that runs up to ten years at the co-op seems a little, I don't know. But, but, but that doesn't mean that we can't do something beyond five years. So we can maybe discuss that at some point. And then only one other thing. Just a couple of questions that I'll, I'll be chasing down to provide some other insights to the board. So that's kind of my next action.
So it sounds like mostly you're taking information to them.
At this time, yes. So we're, we're in the gathering mode. And then we're going to compile and bring it to a, like a summary view and then make it available. Hopefully by a preliminary view by November. We may take up the work of bringing a secondary review once we have a little more information, but.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Do you have a, a sense of what the underlying motivation for this committee is?
I think my, my, from my view, I think it's in order for the other districts to know what's happening and.
When you say districts.
You mean the other district and the town?
And, and the town.
The town and, and the school.
Well, and also the co-op.
Not school district, right?
School districts of Hollis and the co-op.
But it's.
And the town. Those three entities.
Is it mostly school stuff, though?
No, it's town. It's town. For the most part, what's happening at the schools, what are their initiatives? And what, what is the town planning and to get some coordination? Because if everyone has got to have initiatives that is going to float big, big bonds, it's really not taking any consideration for the taxpayers of the town.
I think.
Is it one directional?
I think we're, we're providing information. I mean, they can't, it's an advisory committee, so.
No, I mean, is, but is, is there, is there, there's no representation of the SAU there, is there?
No.
No, other than what, what the school representatives.
So, Rob, and there's a, there's a, there's a school district member.
I'm just trying to figure out. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out if there's a, a bidirectional communication so that the SSU knows what the town's doing.
Yes. Yes.
How?
Well, we're supposed to bring that summary view of what initiatives are going on at the town level, what initiatives are going on in the Hollis School District and what initiatives that may turn into bonds are happening at the co-op. So we provide that view to all three entities.
So how, what's the, what's the communication method that brings the town information to the SAU?
Well, I believe there's, we're receiving those, the information from the town and then the committee is summarizing that.
The reason, but if you, because if you look at the makeup, there's, there's a co-op, there's a, there's Budcom people. There are school board members and stuff. But I'm just not seeing, it doesn't say anything about who has the responsibility to provide that information to the schools.
I don't think that they have it in that, in the charter of their committee. But by Rob, Rob bringing, by Rob being a member and then putting these updates in our agenda, he'll be bringing it to the co-op. Now, whether it gets, and that, and, and to the SAU administrative team. To get to the entire SAU, meaning the Brookline District as well, that would mean that the, at the SAU governing board meeting, you'd put on your agenda that you want some, you'd like an update from the CEAC committee so that that can be brought to the board. But is there a formal process? We can only formalize it here by saying, we want you to do these updates. Is that?
Because it's not for SAU rep.
There's no SAU rep.
I don't, somebody, it needs to go to the superintendent's office, whether it be to the superintendent or assistant superintendents or the business administrator. But they are the ones who need this information of.
Agreed.
What the town has going.
Absolutely.
And, and if it's there, then, then we can with reasonable confidence expect that it, it is applied to, to all school districts. My concern is through the formation of this committee, the town of Hollis is getting what they want.
Right. Absolutely.
Whereas in the past, without this committee existing, there was a imperative that the town meet with the superintendent's office and get that. If they're getting everything they need without meeting with the superintendent's office, is, is, is the SSU going to necessarily get it at the level and the detail they need?
Yeah.
So really good question. That's a, that's not, that's not answered. I think that's a great question.
And it's not, we're, our, I think the charter is somewhat incomplete and we're trying to investigate those holes. And quite frankly, we were only put together earlier this month. So we're already months late with, with starting this work. So, and, and I cautioned the committee, I said, look, we're not going to be able to do deep dive analysis on our view. I said, we're lucky if we're going to even be able to get a view in time for the budgets that are, that are currently being worked on. So I said, we need to kind of shorten what we think we can deliver and deliver something. And in, in some of those instances, those communication paths, and I agree that we should be submitting any view to maybe the, the administration because the administration can bring that information to the different boards. And I think there's another piece that I think, there's, initiatives that are going on in Brookline are still germane because we're connected at the co-op and it's going to affect Hollis taxpayers. So I really think that we should be able to bring a view that says, by the way, there's this, all this other stuff going on, major stuff in Brookline that we need to consider.
And I think to Tom's point, like, you know, the superintendent has always, and we have a new superintendent, but the one that I've only worked with before Gina, Andy, he always said, he always paid, he would say all the time, like, I am, I get that the co-op wants this, but then the school want, this needs this and this needs this. But he also always knew what was. But he also always knew what was going on in the towns.
Right.
He knew that like the town of Brookline is looking at doing this. And I'm sure Gina's doing the same thing, but I do think Tom has a really good point. Like, the relationship between select board and the superintendent and all of that can't be undermined by the existence of like a committee.
No, it shouldn't.
But instead, it should, this should, this should provide more information, not take away those, those opportunities for the groups to.
Absolutely.
I really hear what you're saying, Tom, and I think it's really important that we don't undermine what Gina's doing.
And I'll bring that back to the committee. I'll make sure that they're aware that we should not be turning off exchange. We should be enhancing it.
And I think the committee was formed because there wasn't this, there's, there's no, we don't have a mayor, we have a select board. So, like, the superintendent was always watching out for everything, but the superintendent is so school focused that people don't realize that our superintendent has always paid attention to the fact that like Brookline needs new ambulances or, you know, I mean, and so.
It's unclear how much of the, the information went towards the town, too.
Right, right.
Of things that we're planning to do and are they taking it into account when they're figuring out what they want to bring in bonds to flow?
And Brookline had a significant issue with capital improvement and all of the stuff, still does, so.
No, I'm, I'm saying because they recently made a request for the, for the update because they're, they're having to update their plan.
Right.
And SAU hasn't done it yet.
So, they need.
And I think we're in a mode where the committee doesn't know what they don't know and what works and what we need to do to make it, you know. So, we're, we're kind of building the plane while we're flying.
I get you.
That's my favorite way to do it.
Yeah.
But in another side note on that, I'm just gonna ask the board. So, in the past, the budget committee has received a capital improvement plan presentation. Is that something that you guys would like to see here as well? Would you like a presentation on the capital improvement plan done by Lance? I know that his, the one that he does for the budget committee is very detailed. I don't know if we'd need something, we might need more of a, of an overview. But is that something you feel like we should have as well? And if so.
I don't think you're going to get a Reader's Digest version of it.
Okay, I kind of wanted that.
It was, it was the better part of an hour presentation.
Yeah, I think we need, but maybe I can communicate that it could be about a half an hour, forty, twenty minutes kind of thing, that kind of presentation. Is, besides that, is it something, do we want that?
I think it's important at least to understand the current year and possibly the following year. I don't necessarily want to drill down on five or eight years of the plan.
So, I'm just gonna, I'll throw it out there, there's some other presentations that are coming.
Things I think that would be helpful, if you get the presentation from the most recent one and we looked at it here, I think there'd probably be a short list of questions because an awful lot of it is self-explanatory. Whereas if you, if you start from ground zero.
It's a big lift.
Yeah, that first thirty minutes of going through the slides.
I'll, I'll speak to the superintendent when we talk about agenda building and we'll kind of put that on there. I mean, next month, we'll be seeing a presentation on special education about the programs that we do in-house and how that benefits our students and also how it benefits, you know, a lot of other things. So, we'll get sort of a more of an overview of that, right, Lauren? And so, that's gonna be, we're trying, trying to make sure that we have a presentation every month that's a little bit meaty on like, you know, what's actually happening in the schools. And so, that's what's happening next month. And then we also have class sizes next month, which will be quite, usually that's a little bit of time. So, I don't see a capital improvement plan happening in the next month, but maybe November, December, let's see. We'll talk to Gina about that. Okay, thank you. Moving on to deliberations, and how are we for time? Okay, thanks. So, to see what action the board will take regarding the Hollis Brookline Athletic Booster Club donation of a concession trailer with several implements including generator, running water, water heater, hot dog warmer, pizza warmer and popcorn machine. The sum total of all items being donated is approximately twenty-six thousand dollars.
Can they come to our meeting?
So, I'm gonna ask for a motion and then we can ask questions after that. So, I need a motion to accept with gratitude the Hollis Brookline Athletic Booster Club donation of a concession trailer and associated implements having an approximate value of twenty-six thousand dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Rob, seconded by Beth Anke, so, everybody on tie, so, I'm gonna put feet in the. So, are there any questions about this or comments? Yes. Who owns the trailer? We don't know who owns it, but we'll own it.
Well, is it gonna be owned by the Booster Club, it could be owned by the school, is it gonna be?
Well, it's being donated to the school.
Okay.
And the maintenance.
It will be stored here?
It's on site, right?
Yeah, I know, I know the plans to use it at high school and middle school events.
Does it need to be powered for refrigeration, for storage and stuff?
It has a generator, I know that.
Well, I don't think they're gonna run the generator twenty-four seven. But are they storing food in it, do you know? One of my concerns is, is maintenance and upkeep and who's gonna own it if, or are they gonna empty it out after?
And storage.
Say if it's on a generator, it's being emptied out and brought in for the.
It's a trailer, it's not a freestanding, my, again, my assumption would be they're not storing things in there, it's not.
They'd be storing dry goods, they'd be storing like chips and candy, but they're not.
What about the hot dogs and the pizza and all that, is that gonna be loaded up every?
Provisioned, yeah.
So, who takes care of doing all that?
So, that would be volunteer parents, the Booster Club parents, like, that's not.
So, there isn't, there isn't going to be a responsibility of the school to put food in it?
No, I mean, basically, my sense is that the Booster Club's gonna use, like, not the Booster Club, but each team, like, maybe the football team or the soccer team or whoever, the parents will run. It's sort of like what happens at the thing by the swamp, you know, the concession stand that's by the swamp. That's not provided by the school. Parents go to Costco, they bring in some stuff, people donate it and then they sell. Right, but I'm just saying the provisions are provided by parents and, and families to sell. It's not the school, the school doesn't provide provisions.
But.
It's usually the team parents. I mean, I just, I've seen something recently from the football team that they were asking for parent volunteers to work.
But are they gonna empty everything out of it after?
We did, my kids are in school, we, this is the case.
That's what you did to the concessions.
I would say, I mean, I've been doing this for, like, even with the, the stuff that we have up there now, they do store things that can be stored outside of like cold temperatures, like the chips and war. But it's emptied out on a regular basis and we get email links every week for needing volunteers, there's sign up. There's people that are running it and, you know.
And who controls, who gets to use it?
Usually rotates around to the different booster groups.
So, so, I don't know, but the Booster Club works pretty carefully or has. When I was involved with the Booster Club, worked with the administration on different events and things like that. And there's a pretty good standard of like control of what teams can do and what they can't do. So, it will get rotated, I'm sure, but just like, just like the turf field gets rotated in terms of sometimes football, sometimes soccer's there, you know.
My understanding is for home events at the high school and middle school. Regular Hollywood sell concessions, it's just now a.
Yeah, they've been selling concessions at the sidelines for years, they just bring tables.
It's not a mobile thing. Here's my, here's what I'm wondering.
It is mobile.
Huh?
It is a mobile thing.
No, it hasn't been, the concession stand is not mobile.
Previous.
No, but the, but the concessions that were sold at the football, there's been concessions at football games since.
I understand, the impact of having a trailer that is not hardwired, that is dependent on tires being maintained and things of that. So, is Brian, is ultimately Brian who, who rules this? Is it, is it one of the building administrators? It, the Booster, the Booster Club, are they actually giving it to us? Or are they, are they gonna continue to manage it and control it? But in theory, we own it, we ensure it.
Whose property is it?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a very ambiguous relationship. So, if we own it, if the, if we accept this as a donation, we have the title to it, we own it, we figure out where it's there, we decide who.
So, do you want to, can we table this, get more information? Cause those are all legitimate questions. I would hate to see us vote no on this without noting the answers to all of those questions and give them some time, the administration, the athletic department and the Booster Club to come up with answers to those questions? Would anybody like to make a?
I would, if we're going to accept it, I would like to see a written policy for how it's going to be utilized.
I feel like that's a really legitimate thing, so I would like to, I entertain a motion to table it. Do I, or to remove the motion, what do we do?
Yeah, I, I can support that motion, yes, I'll make that motion.
To table it?
Yeah, because I have some other questions around public health. Who, who, who cleans the grills and the hot dog machine and are they trained to do so? Do we need some sort of certificate and inspections made? I don't want to hear that we gave, you know, half the town of Hollis, you know, you know, stunk elements.
How have concessions been done up at the field up to this point?
Tables, literally tables and they bring in.
They brought in a grill.
Sometimes they bring in grills, sometimes they bring in box boxes of pizza, a popcorn machine.
That's been completely pathetic and good and there's no problems with it.
It's gone under the radar.
It's under the radar, but now, but now this is a.
It hasn't been sanctioned nor hasn't been reviewed.
This is a rolling cafeteria, basically. So, how we're preparing food in the school may be pretty similar.
Just, just to throw it out there, I almost rather the Booster Club continue to own it and provide it as a service and we agree to allow them to do it than to have the school own it.
That might change the answers to all the questions.
So, yeah, so I think we have a motion to table, do we have a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor of tabling this till next month?
So, these are the things we need to know.
So, I know Dot's taking notes. Jacob, did you capture that in your brain?
Yeah, I'll talk to Brian.
Okay, so, also, please encourage Brian to watch this part of the meeting.
We very much appreciate the intent.
Absolutely.
And we just want to make sure it's done safely and in an area that isn't going to come back to haunt us.
Yeah, and there's hidden costs if we, if we do own it. And, and like the public health questions I have, these are, have to be figured out if we take it on.
I think we're very grateful for the idea and the thought of it. And I definitely know that we've been in conversation behind the scenes, the athletic director, you know, we've talked about it here, about potentially having a permanent concession stand up there and building out like some sort of locker room space, I mean bathrooms. There's been a lot of things that people have talked about building up at the field. And so, this is a way for the Booster Club to provide what people really want, which is folks want an opportunity to buy food, to get snacks for kids, to make a football game, soccer game, a hockey game, more of a community event by having these kinds of things offered. And so, the Booster.
It's a fundraiser, isn't it?
Hmm?
It's a revenue stream.
And it, and it makes money for the, for the, it actually makes money for the teams. It goes into team accounts and then teams can use that for gear, for, you know, their own events kind of thing. So, it's definitely that, but the questions we have are related to, you know, health and safety concerns, concerns about maintenance of the trailer, who's gonna cover that, what would that cost? Also, is this generator running, is it plugging in somewhere? What's going on in terms of what are we using in terms of our utility sources? Where are we keeping it, what storage are we using? So, those are kind of the questions that we have. These are all part of our due diligence as the board to make sure that we have answers to those questions. And so, but we do really appreciate the idea and I definitely am all for, you know, some sort of concessions being up at that field. And then I do think Tom has a really good point, like, it's at the field or at the middle school, but there are other events that occur and, you know, would we potentially move it down to a different field? Like what, you know, who gets first dibs on it, how does that work? Who's making those plans? So, those are all legitimate questions.
And who moves it if you do want to talk about it?
Well, also, that's the other piece, like, how is it getting moved? So, those are all really good questions and I would encourage the athletic director and other people involved, the boosters, to watch this portion of the meeting so that they would understand all of our questions. So, we've tabled it, we haven't turned it down. Okay, moving forward.
Can I just ask a quick question? Didn't, I don't know if it was last year or several years ago, it was a whole thing where it was one or more food truck people that wanted to come in? Do you remember that?
I know we had.
Did we ever have food trucks up there?
Yes, they did a food truck event two years ago, the group of seniors. Group of seniors did, or maybe last year's seniors.
There was a company that wanted to, one person wanted to contract with us.
Two years ago, it was just a special event. They did a, they just did, um, it was during lunch, for the seniors, yeah.
There was someone who wanted to come and have a, have a concession at a.
I don't remember that.
At our games.
That doesn't mean it didn't happen, I just don't remember. All right, moving on, Policy J I, so, Policy J I C J is off of the policy memo, it's being completely, it's being treated separately. We thought we'd get a lot of feedback on it and also, it's just, you know, it's just, I figured we'd want to talk about it. So, I figured it wouldn't be good on the memo because we try not to talk about too much on the memo. So, we're at second reading for Policy J I C J. I'm gonna have us put a, put the motion, put it on the, you know, motion, make a motion for it and then we can talk about any changes that you would like to see moving forward. So, I just need a motion to accept the second reading of Policy J I C J unauthorized communications devices as amended because it was already amended. So, moved by Rob and seconded by Beth. So, at this point, if there's something that you would like us to take back in the policy committee, and I say us because Amy and I are on the policy committee, Amy's doing an excellent job and Dot is on the policy committee and Lauren has been sitting in on the policy committee and Jacob's on the public committee and so is Patrick. Please give us feedback. We may not make all the changes you suggest, but we just want to take the feedback back and then we will talk about them. So, go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
I'm just curious, what was amended between last, first reading and now?
So, we took out some bolded things, it's like strictly prohibited, we unbolded that.
The title of Section D, we changed to consequences for violations instead of consequences and violations. I think in Section C.
When I saw it before I, yeah, the view that I was looking at before.
The only change you won't see is because when we took the bold out, we didn't underline those words because we weren't actually changing them, so we just de-bolded a couple of things that were in the text.
The strikeouts didn't show on the, the way I was viewing it before.
Is there anything else, Lauren?
Yes, so, under, under exceptions, you'll see minor changes and I'm very sorry, this was not the fully edited version from the policy committee. So, there is, so we'll, we'll review it again. But under exceptions, where there's a sentence that's gonna be added that's gonna clarify that any request for an accommodation or an exception does require a meeting that includes an administrator, whether it's the IEP or 504 team as appropriate or a multilingual student. But regardless of whether the student has a plan, a parent can still make a request for an exception. We want to make sure that that process is clearly outlined that there is going to be a meeting that occurs. And then there's minor changes that you'll see after Title Six of the Civil Rights Act may be exempt from portions of this policy. There's no, there's not going to be a circumstance to my knowledge, but, you know, that, someone will be exempt from the entire policy. So, we want to make sure that that's clear.
Right. So, the only change I would like to see us make, I know that you and Tom and Rob made a case last month for keeping the, the first offense, second offense, third offense, like the proceeds features in the policy. It's really not something that we normally do. And I feel like as this policy goes into effect and as these consequences are laid out, the administration might start to get a feeling for like, maybe this is too much, maybe this is too little, maybe we need to change this. I hate to have it be in policy. I'd like there to be a little bit more ability for the administration to make nuanced changes to consequences. So, I would prefer to have that out. And I think it would, it's all in the handbook and so I know that parents might go to the policy to see what the, what the violations are. But if we make sure that it just says that that's in the handbook in the policy.
Yeah, just reference the handbook.
I would rather it be that way than have it be in the policy because we did get some pushback on some of the consequences and, and things might have to change. I don't, I'm not saying they will this year, but I'd love for this to be in place and then, you know, not have to change the whole policy.
I'd like the board to understand those changes when and if they do take place.
I agree.
So, it's not, otherwise, we don't know what's changing.
Well, we might be able to put that language because we have a, we have a, we have the, that. um, that, you know.
Yeah, material changes should be brought before the board, but I don't, I, I'm fine, I, I agree that, that the actual consequences and violations may, may belong elsewhere.
That was gonna be my suggestion, because I, I do agree with some of the parent complaints about taking the device and having a parent show up, because some parents can't get to the school in time, like, there's no way, and I, I struggle with us taking away a piece of personal property that has a lot of safety measures and expenses and so many things attached to it, so, but that to me is the, the best way to do that, is we can address that, but that's, that, it's gonna change, I really think that this is gonna be a flexible thing as things change, we're gonna have new device, all sorts of things, so I agree completely, I think we should pull that portion out.
It's not in any, we don't, we don't put procedures in policy.
Yeah, not usually.
We just generally don't. We try really hard to make policy be policy and procedures be procedure, and this is very procedural to me, and so I would like to see it removed, and, and we talked about it in the policy committee, but this was one of our main questions that we brought to the board last month, that was the question that kind of, we, we pulled a lot of this from New Hampshire School Board Association, and they basically said, you can do it this way, or you can do it that way. So we presented it to the board with everything in there, with the idea that we wanted to hear what you guys had to say about that, and, you know.
The concern that I have with taking it out, I, I agree with what you're saying in principle, the concern I have with taking it out is that the, uh, the repercussions change without the board being aware of them, and without the board having, having, having input to it. Um, how, how do you?
Maybe we can put that in policy.
Well, what's the current po- what's the current procedure or process for any changes made during, to the handbook during the school year?
There isn't one that involves the board.
Yeah, there isn't really one that, that involves the board.
Oh, great, good to know.
But.
And that, that's, that's by design.
Right, right.
But is there a middle ground, like making it a regulation?
Under, under letter E, you could consider that, um, if it's reviewed annually, you can write any recommendations for policy or procedure changes be delivered to the board.
Well, but it's not a procedure either.
The procedures that we're looking to pull out?
The, the regulate, the, the repercussions, whatever we're calling it, the.
The consequences?
Consequences, if they go into the handbook, those are not considered procedures.
Well, it's a procedure to follow for the conse- I mean, or you can, you can, you can phrase however you want to phrase it, but you, you, you could also do an annual review of this portion of the handbook, and that could be put in there.
I'd be more, I would be more interested, at least in the early phases of it, for the board to have oversight before changes made rather than after.
Okay.
Right, like the, like, so what?
Absolutely.
The recommendations for the changes would be brought to the board before the handbook is revised.
I think, I think maybe because this is new, we do it for this year.
The recommendations for any changes to the handbook would be brought before the board, before the handbook's revised, so the, the handbook's revised in the summer. So if you had any recommendations for this, you know, consequences et cetera to be brought to the board, you can set a month to.
So the, the handbook is not a living document during the school year?
Correct.
Because the parents have all signed off.
The parents sign off on it in August, so we update it in July.
My understanding was if a change needed to be made, the change would be made, new notification would be sent back out to parents.
Correct, but we tried, so for this particular policy, that is something we may have to do, because this is so new, and it had to be done very quickly over the summer, um, but we try to avoid that at all costs. We really do update the handbook annually. This is a little bit of an exception, because, you know, everything happened so quickly, we had to have something in the handbook for parents to be aware of.
Yeah.
When they signed off in August, but knowing that this is a big conversation, everything that you're saying is an understandable concern, um, so if there is a change that this board and the administration want to make, we will do that process, well, we typically try to avoid it.
It sounds like if you keep it in the policy, it's easier to, to change it on the fly than if it's in the handbook.
So we have to do three readings on, to do changes.
Right, regardless.
What?
The policy change would take three months, three readings.
It doesn't re- it doesn't have to. It doesn't have to.
No, it doesn't.
Well, it doesn't have to, but if it's, if it's, if, if it's a big material change, and it would cause people to say, hey, I want to go to the school board and give them a piece of my mind about this, and we do it in one reading, it's.
And what, but also, if you, if you change the policy, you still have to change the handbook though.
If there's a necessary change.
Yeah.
It's change both.
What, but also, what if there, there's a situation and the administration needs to make a decision on that day for a particular student who maybe, for whatever reason, and it's a compelling reason, needs that phone after school? And the administration needs to make that decision. If it's in the policy, they can't make that decision.
If it's in the handbook, they can't do it either if it says it has an absolute.
Then I guess I'm not completely comfortable with that, um, consequence.
Then maybe, maybe the wording should be in there that authorizes someone to make a, a discretionary decision, and, and whether it's in the handbook or in the policy, that's a valid concern, but I don't think the location addresses that concern.
Although I appreciate that if we've never put something like this in policy before, then why would we put this in here now?
That's not a, that's not an accurate statement. We, we don't usually.
We don't usually, it never is a bad, yeah.
We try to avoid it.
I haven't been on the policy committee, poor so I don't.
We try to, to avoid it, but there, there are, there are specific policies.
Isn't restraint one of those policies? Because we, 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 we itemize the restraints and what, what you can do and what you can't do.
That's specific to law.
So for instance, we have, we have ones for staff that clearly outlaw, like, repercussions of, of certain things. There are policies, thing with firearms, things like that.
So.
Are both in, in, in policy and in the handbook.
So the law doesn't lay out the consequences. There's nothing in the law that lays out the consequences. It's, it's the decision of the, there's nothing in the law that says how you're gonna, the law just says a ban. The law doesn't say that there even has to be consequences. You could just say, no cell phones, no consequences. Like, you know, like, you just have to, but in order for them to actually not pull out their cell phones, there needs to be consequences, we know that, but the law doesn't have that in the language, so this is not from the law. This is suggested, you know, this is just part of the suggestion that you could do it this way and lay it out this way. I would like the policy committee to take another stab at this. I don't think this is gonna go to third and adopt, I hope it does, but, um, maybe take this out and put language in there that gives the sense that if there's a change to the consequences or to the process, that that be brought to the board.
So there's, there's two, there's two elements. One is what you just described, the other is what Kate described, is do you want to have a mechanism for exceptions?
Mm-hmm.
And if you have that, to whom do you want to give authorization to make an exception?
And that's for the policy, we'll grapple with that.
Yeah, so.
We'll grapple with all of this, we'll, we'll go through it, we'll talk to the principals, we've got, you know, our, our assistant superintendent's there too, we'll grapple with it. That's all I'm throwing out there is that I don't love having it in here, but maybe it is because I feel like we need to be able to make an exception i- in case there is an exception. Also, some of the, um, pushback we've gotten has related specifically to the third offense, the language of the third offense, and, um, you know, maybe we need to talk in policy about that. So, I think we just, we'll take this back.
Yep, so, there's two, well, the thing about the, the third offense, and, and I am not advocating for a specific, um, uh, outcome of a third offense, but I have difficulty with the argument that says the, you shouldn't have something that creates a significant inconvenience.
I do too.
And, I, if you've got.
If we suspend a kid, they gotta come pick the kid up.
Or detention.
If you, if you, if you've got someone who is repeatedly doing it, unless there's, I, I, unless there's some pain that takes place, there's no incentive to change the behavior.
Yeah, I completely agree. I'm not, I actually think the third offense is fine, I think parents need to, but that's where we're getting the pushback. I think that there's a point where whenever you, you have a student who has not complied maybe one, two, three, four, however many times, three times in this case, um, yeah, parent has to come and pick that up, and that is, you're right, that phone is really important, that phone could be, you know, there, that family's, doesn't have a landline, that could be, but if you, if that phone matters that much to your family, that you, that your kid needs to have it after school, as a parent, you should be saying to your kid, don't bring your phone to school. If you can't not look at your phone during the day, leave it in your car if you happen to be a kid who drives, or leave it in your backpack, do it, and if, if your kid can't, is, is that kid who can't do it, yeah, you've got to drive down, and you might have to leave work, and I know that sounds like so rude and so inconvenient, but who put you in that position? It's like, that's part of being a parent, sorry. I mean, I sound like my mom.
But just remember, some, some people can't physically, like, you can't leave work, like, I have a child where, like, I.
I get it, I get it.
Don't give your kid a phone.
I'm not disagreeing with that, and I'm, I'm not saying, I, I, like, I'm.
I'm not saying you personally, I'm saying to the.
It's not a perfect world.
It isn't perfect, it isn't a perfect world, and I don't see that, but I also think, if we were to follow that thought process, then we couldn't give detention to kids who don't have a car or a ride home.
No, that's not necessarily true either. I mean, I've seen times where administration has worked with families because of that, and they might do a delayed one. So you might, my kid's not, my kid earned a detention, my kid's gonna serve that time, but it might not be today, because mom can't leave work, mom can't be there.
Right.
And the administration has worked with students, because, yes, there should be consequences, but we have to be mindful of how they impact everybody, and I just, I just think we have, I just think this is really.
But if this is in the school board policy, we can't work with it.
Right, right, right.
Even if it's in the handbook, you can't work with it, unless the wording allows for exceptions, so regardless of where you're putting it, there was up to.
There's wording in probably, in, in every handbook that I've seen, I don't.
That there's discretion.
I haven't known this whole one in, in and out yet, but every handbook that I've seen, there is language that gives administrators at the specific school flexibility for exceptions.
It does not currently for this, it, it, it mirrors the wording in the policy currently.
So let's take, let's, the policy, we're gonna take a look at that, see if we can come up with some way to make that work, let's, let's, let the administration kind of grapple with some of that, talk about it amongst themselves, because we definitely have some things that we need to think about, but.
So two other items. One is your question about headphones, I'm just reminded that, that you do it, and you might want to consider some phrasing of terminology to talk about, and other internet connectable devices.
Okay.
A lot of working parts to this thing.
I mean, because if that's what we really want to stop is to, is the unregulated, uncontrolled connection to the internet, and make that a, a key element of the definition of the devices being controlled, is the internet connection.
It's the origin, the technical advisory that cover that.
Yeah, the technical advisory seems to say that that's what we're supposed to be watching out for, is internet connectivity, but the law, I thought was more about, like, distractibility, but like, that's the problem, is like, that's why it's been hard to grapple with this and to have this done in a two-month period when, you know, the administrators. I think it's a good law, I think it's, I'm not saying the actual language of the law is good, but I think the idea of having a ban, a bell-to-bell ban on cell phones, is not a bad thing for our kids, I think it's a really good thing for our kids, but the way this has unfolded and the, the shortness of time and the ability to kind of come up with this, is, it's much more complicated when you're dealing with all these different language pieces.
The execution of a ban is a lot harder than the ban itself.
But we're working on it, and we're getting there, and.
And we're gonna learn as we get into the school year what's working and what's not, right?
Right.
So, I, I could see easily, we, and, and next summer, we're gonna possibly open this back up and look and make changes.
There's a built-in review in April.
We missed a lot of things.
In the policy, there's a review in April, so we will be looking at this again.
So, there you go.
Thank you, thanks for saying.
I was just.
Thank you.
All right.
So we just send this back.
Beat that up pretty good.
We're, oh, we need to, um, we need to take a vote on, we did second read, so we, we'll send it all back and make a, make big changes, so, um, all in favor of, um, second read? Oh, Beth, we're taking the vote without her. All in favor?
Six.
Six, zero. And then we'll continue with the amendment, so we'll be on third read. All right, so now we have the policy memo. Let me just pull it up, if you guys don't, just give me a second. Okay. All right. Thank you. So, um, I need to put the policy memo on this, so I need a motion to approve the recommendations identified in the policy memo as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Kate?
Second.
Second by Cindy. Okay, so, moving through the policies that we have here, we have, um, for third reading and adopt, we have with no changes, we have I G E, which is parental objection to specific course material, and I H A M, health education, an exemption from extruncture. Just for your information, what we do in the policy committee is, Amy's taking notes now on all of our comments, but we also read through all the minutes, um, usually from the past two meetings, to make sure that there's been no suggestions. By the time we get to third and adopt with no changes, it's because we haven't heard from anybody on this.
Do you want to talk through them as you go through them, or do, on this policy, or do you want to wait and go through the whole memo and then we'll go back individually?
You can, you can stop me now if you have something that you want to say, because we're at third and adopt on this one.
I have a, a concern with I H A M.
Okay.
And it's, it's not one of substance, I mean, it's not, you know, of how it happens, but I, there's a, the wording, um, I don't know if you want to open it up or.
I'm, I'm getting there.
I'm ready, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, in the opt-out procedure form, the first, uh, the first line says parents or parents slash guardians or students over eighteen years of age, so it's, it's engaging students over eighteen who have authority over themselves.
Right.
All the rest of that strictly talk about parents or guardians, and it doesn't really, I acknowledge the fact that how you treat a student over eighteen, do they still, can they just make decisions on their own? Do they have to fill out forms acknowledging it? Um, so, I don't know if you want to have one separate paragraph or line that just says students over eighteen can, can, can act on their own behalf for any of the above, I'm, you know, I just think at some place you need to delineate what, um, uh, an adult, a non-minor student does to opt out. Okay? And then the la- and the, and the other thing related to that is, how do you treat emancipated students? Do they, are they considered, um, like an eighteen-year-old?
Typically, yes, but there could be nuances to it, um, I can find that out for you.
So I'm just, the clarification of how.
Okay.
An eighteen-year-old or an emancipated and/or emancipated student would, would act in this process of opt-out, I think needs to be clarified.
Okay, the, the eighteen-year-old definitely can.
Yeah.
Sign on their own, and, because we have that for even special education paperwork, -sign on their own, and, because we have that for even special education paperwork, et cetera, eighteen, they are, as long as they have, parents have not got guardianship over them, they can sign themselves. Um, but I will find out about the emancipated.
So we're going to have to-
So the, well, the question I have is, do you want to bring back for another one? Or do you want to just come up with a simple one-line amendment and approve and adopt as amended?
So I would rather change it on the memo and amend the memo to say that third reading and adopt with no changes is IGE, and then we'll do third reading for IHAM.
Okay.
With, and it has no changes right now, but kind of like what we're going to do for student conduct, we're presenting it for third read with no changes. So I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to amend the memo, so.
Do you share my-
Yeah, it's fine, it's really fine. I just, yeah, it's fine. I, I don't-
Sorry if I didn't catch it last.
No, it's okay. It's, it's fine. It's just part of the problem, you know, part of, we're working off this memo, so we're just going to amend the memo and, um, and change it from third reading and adopt with no changes. IGE will be third reading and adopt with no changes. IHAM and JIC will go to, to third reading with, we're going to accept them for third reading with no changes. So we, we're presenting it to you with no changes, but we're going to be expecting to be bringing it back with some changes.
Thank you.
So, um, so we're, does that make sense? So those will both come back for fourth read. So that's the amendment I'm making to the motion, I guess, or to the memo. Um, and then student conduct, that's third reading with, actually, it shouldn't say no changes. We went through this, right? So third reading of-
It says third reading with some changes.
There are, oh, you know what? I have, this is an old, that's what, I, I have the old, yeah, we have, like, you, you printed up the old, the old thing. Okay, sorry. I'm sorry. The one that's, I printed, isn't the same. So there were some changes in the third reading of JIC, and we felt like we couldn't, we didn't want to go to third and adopt. So JIC is third and, um, some changes. I want to just look at it, sorry, I'm kind of flipping around. So the changes we made, if you look down below under student conduct is, we added language about the multi-tier system of supports for behavioral health and wellness, and we wanted to make sure that you guys understood that before we went into an adopt. We generally try not to ask you to adopt something that we've changed. We usually try to, like, have the changes out there for at least one month before we adopt. And so, and then you'll look down below under student code of conduct, we have such, such age-appropriate rules and regulations for each school as he or she deems necessary to implement the objective. So that's new language, as you can see there.
A technical question-
I know more down at the bottom.
About our policies, are we able to and do we include live links when other documents are referenced?
No, we've been taking them out.
You have?
Yes.
Is one of, one of the things that would be, I think, helpful?
Just to know what MTSS/B is?
No, this, this comes out of the discussions that we had about the cellphone thing, is, um, making it in, somewhere in the policy area, if it's possible, to get to the, the student handbook and, and conduct. Because even what's not a policy gets referenced so often, it would be nice for people who are in policy to be able to find some of those support documents. I don't know if that's possible or not.
So we've been removing links to things?
That's, came from the board, Jeremiah, personally, they didn't want the links anymore.
So I'm, I'm thinking more on the, on the website page, so that someone doesn't have to figure out. This, this goes back to the fact that policies are, are being hosted separately and the, from the regular website. And when you're on it, looking at policies, and you go up to the top of your search on, on handbook or student con, conduct, it comes up with nothing, or it comes in with, with references to it, and you still, it's like a circular argument.
All right, so hopefully that was all captured. We will, um, look into that. These were the changes that were made. Are there any questions on that? Moving forward, we have, um, a few policies that were for second read and also had some changes. Um, that would be IHBA, programs for students with disabilities. Um, I don't know what changes we made, but special education evaluations, IHBAB, IHBAM, district special education policy and procedures manual, and then JICJ should not be on this. Should not be on the memo, and it isn't anymore, I don't think. So I'm looking at two different things, because I'm bouncing around. Thank you. So are there any questions on those? And then, um, we have presented for first read, and these are the ones that we would love feedback on, is, um, IHBAA, which is evaluation requirements for children with specific learning disabilities. Um, we removed quite a bit of the old language and added, um, new language related to, um, help me, Lauren, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So this, so this, this policy has not been reviewed since September twenty, twenty-eleven, um, and there has been some updates to the RSA and to different regulations. So I just asked, um, for the policy committee to put in new language that meets all of those requirements and how we determine, um, specific learning disabilities in our evaluation process. So that's what this outlines right now.
And then JJ-R is access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home educated pupils administrative regulations. This is a regulation policy. Um, and again, is this all new?
Yep, so, so JJ-J was something that, um, you guys, I believe, have reviewed and adopted. This is the regulation that goes along with it. JJ-J replaced, I cannot remember what it replaced.
We have to bring them, because we haven't done the rescind.
Oh, we have to rescind it. Okay, I apologize. So Dot, so Dot has to, um, rescind some of these. But there's been an updated law for, um, how non-public charter school and home educated pupils can participate in public school programs. So this is based completely on new RSA, so we have all new language.
Um, on, on this JJJR, the next-to-last paragraph-
On number five?
The one that says coaches, teachers. I would suggest if it's permissible in the last sentence to replace are expected to with the word must. To me, it just-
Yep, I don't see-
Conveys a different-
Yep.
Tone.
Does it say are expected to or may establish?
It says, uh, students are expected to abide. And I just want, students must abide.
Oh, okay.
Because expectations are sometimes not met.
Sure. And then, and I just want to throw, um, also, because I don't think I was at the policy committee when this one was, was reviewed, but for number six, there was feedback from other-
Where's the numbers?
Number six? Mine has numbers. JJJR?
One through six.
Is this the same thing?
Yeah, you're just not numbered, I think. Yeah, this is, this is number-
Oh, that's so funny. The one, and I'm on the, the agenda on the website, and I clicked on the, the linked one, and it has numbers.
Yeah, mine, mine as well.
Oh, okay. Oh, made me nervous. I was like, oh, I was like-
I've seen what you're seeing.
So-
From what was on my screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the, so the very last note, ho- home educated or other non-district school students may be required to provide proof of recent, you see that one? So there's been feedback from some, um, advisors and such that maybe don't limit proof of a recent physical examination for athletics only. There may be clubs or other activities. You've got climbing club, you have other activities and clubs that people may want.
So do you want it to say extracurricular?
Yep, so other, yeah, rather than only athletics. So that's just food for thought for the policy committee. That, that came recently from some co-op advisors, so.
All right, moving forward.
Athletics considered an extracurricular?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we go back for a second to IHBB, IHBAA?
Wait, which, the specific, is that the specific learning disabilities?
About, about, no, evaluation.
The evaluation.
Special education evaluations, yeah.
The, the language, um, in the first sentence-
That we added?
That we added, a specific learning disability is determined through professional judgment.
Wait, where, oh, it is IHBA. Okay, that's what I thought you were.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Using multiple supporting evidences. I didn't know if that was, was that pulled from?
Where are you?
Literally the first sentence of the new writing. So a specific learning disability is determined through professional judgment. I didn't know if the terminology-
Using multiple evidences. So, yes, so that's been, um-
Was that pulled?
Reviewed, yeah, it was pulled, it was reviewed from legal, legal counsel. I can't tell you exactly where it was pulled from. Um, because really, when you're looking at all the evaluations, you're taking all the evidence using the, the criteria below.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Judgment's just kind of a weird-
Weird way to say it.
-word in that, in that spot.
I, I can look for another word if we want to.
I, but I didn't know if that was, like, you had to use that or not. It's, it's a little awkward, but-
I will take a look at where it's pulled from. I don't believe we have to use that word. Um-
Yeah, I think I'm in, I'm in the other, I'm in the other policy that's-
And we do need to also edit the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District.
Oh, the Hollis School District, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Yep, I'll take a look at the word judgment.
Cool, thanks.
All right, next is, um, visitors to schools. Um, the language that's been added to visitors to schools relates to, when there's, when there's an observation, right, Lauren? Like, if a student needs to be observed by a contractor or a-
Yes.
Yeah. So that's what was added there, outside providers, because they're technically visitors to schools.
A question for you on the first paragraph where it says members of the school system. School board members are not members of the, of the school system, are they?
No, because we're not in session when we're there. We're regular people.
I, um, I'm not too worried about the group we've got now, but I think it might be worth specifically saying that school board members are not included.
I like that.
Like, school board members are considered a member of the public, or like, or not considered members of the school. Yeah, okay. So we'll make a note of that.
I said, we're visitors.
Like, we're visitors. We're visitors, we're not, we're not like a teacher who is going between buildings.
I've heard a lot of stories in other districts of school board members sort of walking in and-
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Doing things they shouldn't do. Uh, the other question I have is a little bit more general, but I wrote it in, uh, halfway down above in the interest of not disturbing the educational process. Does this include any school properties outside the building?
What do you mean?
Well, ca, if, if a, an activity is occurring outside the, the walls, to the same restrictions about observation and being there, because we allow people to walk on the grounds.
That's a good question. Like, if you're, what if a teacher takes a group of students outside? Um, to do, or just to have an outdoor classroom type thing? Yeah, so, um, we might need to add the word grounds to this, so that people need permission.
Do it in a way that you're not saying people can't come on the property, because I don't think we want to stop people from utilizing-
But we don't want, we don't need the people who are walking their dogs to, to stand and watch a classroom, a class, because the privacy of our students, yeah.
I don't know how you draw that line, but I think you may want to-
We'll make a note to that. We'll figure out, we'll try.
That seems like tough thing.
Still part of the educational process, even if they're-
All right, I was just trying, when I was looking at the words about what constitutes a visitor, and it seemed to, I don't, I, I-
So this isn't questions about the new language, this is questions about the old language, like the, the existing language.
It said it's a new policy, so I didn't, I-
It's not a new policy, but there's new language. But this isn't really about the language that we added. This is about the language that we already had.
My point is, I couldn't tell from what I was looking at what's new and what's not.
Oh, you don't have the edited thing?
I, I printed it from what was showing on my computer screen, and it didn't show the lines on-
So you don't have the strike-throughs and the, and the underlines?
Apparently not.
It's so interesting.
If there are any, then no, I don't.
Yeah, there are, there are, yeah.
Almost the entire first paragraph is existing language. So, and what you're referring to is sort of that first paragraph, like, what-
That one is, but I, I, my question about outside the building came down when I saw-
Underlined, visitors.
In the interest of not disturbing educational process.
So, so Tom, are you wondering also about using the word building? Because it says, like, even in the first paragraph, all persons other than staff and pupils are considered visitors if they come to the school. They're advised, they are to advise the school principal or secretary they are in the building.
Yep.
So we're looking at also to add grounds. Because you can't just be on-
During the school day.
During the school day, yeah. So you, so you're looking to make that more, more specific to, to the property of the school.
I'm not necessarily looking to do it. I'm asking the question of, do we want to?
I think we might actually have an anti-
We have no controls over the grounds currently.
Yep.
And I think to a certain extent, we have other permissions that actually encourage the public to, to use all this land.
How did you know we were here?
No, agree, I understand, yep.
That's quite an assumption that you thought we were still here.
So I think, I think the feedback-
We have people walking their dogs in the high school property all the time.
There's a lot of side conversation, but, um, I think the feedback about, you know, making sure visitors to schools is not just building related, but visitors to property, so that if, if, if parents, if a teacher is running an outdoor classroom, because they should be able to use the facility to do that, we don't want, they should, people should have permission to observe that.
No, I'm, I'm also looking at it the other way. Perhaps it's okay, and what we need to do is let staff know that if you go outside, you are no longer protected-
Right.
-by this.
We have to decide in policy.
The sole goal is that we do, and I say this before, said this before, do it by intent, not by accident.
Right, got it. All right, and then the last one is, um-
One question.
Sure.
Why did we strike and must report and sign in at the school office if they're visitors?
It's moved.
Oh, we just moved it, okay.
I can open the other one.
The very, the very last paragraph of that sentence.
Okay.
Of that sentence, of that paragraph. The last sentence of that paragraph, I can say that eventually.
And then finally, um, we have-
Oh, it actually says school, school grounds, but anyway.
It does say school grounds, but then it says building up here, so we just need to clarify that.
Yeah, okay.
And clarify what we want it to be. Like, as he said, like, by intent, like, do we, do we think it's okay for people to just be observing them outside? Are they not protected? Like, that's good. And then the last one was IJOA, field trips and excursions. We added some language in policy so that it would, um, be very clear to students that are seeking assistance with funding, they should make a request to the building principal. So we would no longer have requests going to department heads or staff members or, um, any kind of what was brought up, like essay writing for field trip requests. So, um, that's in policy. And then if you wanted to have a broader conversation about, um, how decisions are made about financing and helping someone with, you know, financial means, we could talk about that at a later date. But this is just a policy thing. The procedure for that, who gets financial aid? That is something that is being worked on, I think, or is, we already know. Like, obviously, there's the obvious case of, like, students who qualify for a free reduced lunch or whatever, but there might actually be even more extending circumstances, like I have, you know, quadruplets, and they all want to go to Washington DC, and that's a lot of money, so.
Could, could, could I suggest considering making it a, a new paragraph, starting with the word no, stu, no, with no student? Just, just to emphasize, start a new paragraph which says no student will be denied the opportunity, so that that, that-
Is separated.
Is recognized as, that's, that's the mandate, and here's what you do.
Okay, sure, we'll take that note.
Yeah, um, Beth, ju, just for, for your edification.
Okay, so-
Wait, I just want to tell her about, about this policy, this particular policy, the discussion we had last time when she was not here.
Beth?
Yes, because she, she and I had been talking about-
I think it was two, two months ago that we had the conversation.
Two months ago.
The issue, the issue that was, the issue that was discussed when we talked about this was that the, not, the, not the correct, the incorrect people were being asked about it. People didn't know about the mechanisms. So I believe this is an attempt to rectify that.
To make sure that anything that is applied for goes through the building principal and not through a teacher or a staff member or, it's, and the decision would be made by the building principal. So that's the person who would have access to most information related to all the different things. But how the building principal makes that decision is not something we've put in policy.
Correct.
So, um, so I need somebody to make an amendment to change IHAM, the policy IHAM from third read and adopts to fourth reading. Um, and then if we accept that amendment, then we can approve the motion that's already on the table. Moved by Rob.
I think it's been third reading.
No, I think it just goes to third reading, not fourth reading.
It goes to third reading, sorry. It goes to third reading, not a, not fourth reading, sorry. Third reading, not adopt. So the, so Rob has approved the amendment to turn that to, um, that's, he's moved to turn IHAM to third read only, and Beth has seconded that. Okay, so now we can vote on the memo. All those in favor? Um, seven, zero. So the memo is carries. Okay. That means that we are at the end of our meeting, and I would, we are going to go into a non-public, but I would like to hear out from the process observer first.
Well, first of all, I wanted to congratulate you on even with a late start, getting to the end as scheduled. That was surprising.
Look at that. So amazing.
And, uh, good.
I said backhand, this isn't surprising.
I think that, I think the things are, are working well procedurally. This, this memo thing, I think we've sort of gotten the swing of things, and I appreciate the flexibility that's been shown by the people here for allowing discussions where, where wanted.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Thank you, Tom. Anything else? All right, thanks for that report. I'd like, I need a motion that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A, point three, is it C? To discuss a matter which if discussed in public would likely affect firstly the reputation of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself. Moved by Beth, seconded by Rob. This is in a roll call vote, so I'll start, start with Tom.
Tom, I.
Amy, I.
Cindy, I.
Holly, I.
Kate, I.
Beth, I.
Rob, I.
Um, so that means we are now in non-public at eight thirty-three. For the viewing public, because I know there's so many out there, we will be adjourning after the non-public.
Are we relocating or staying here?
We will be relocating. We'll be relocating, so you can break down, and then we will adjourn from there, so. Thank you.